I'm gonna open the meeting and remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded. Jeff will be back in just a minute. Our first item was the Central Street sidewalk. And I guess we're still waiting for the end of the show.
He's here.
Yeah, I hope you can find screen now, please. We don't hear you.
Can you hear me through this? Can you hear me through this?
I guess it's just on.
Are you guys better now?
Now it's on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All this technology. Alright. So the seven o'clock, the Central Street sidewalk.
Dan, the town engineer is here. I'll be right back in, but I'll start the presentation.
Sure, we can do some minutes first. Go ahead, John. Do you have your motions there?
Yes. Now I have one for minutes, but see. Is there one in there for minutes or motion or?
You know what? I'm not sure if we got them in, but I
Okay, basically, it's time to approve the minutes of seven fifteen twenty twenty five as printed.
Okay.
You say
Yeah, I move I move to accept the minutes from seven fifteen twenty twenty five. Sorry.
Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? If you're not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If I oppose. Let the record show forward, favor no opposed.
I move to accept the minutes from eight five twenty twenty five.
Second. Hey, a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? If you're not all in favor, please say aye.
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 Record show forward, favor no opposed.
I don't think we have those minutes in there.
Don't take their ending?
No, I think just the fifteen.
Fifteen is the only ones that were actually printed in the
The other two
The meeting minutes?
The other two were not printed.
Okay. Ever.
Sorry about that.
I was wrong my motion.
Next meeting, we'll get those other two.
Yes.
Alright.
Okay.
Hey.
So, um, hi everyone. I'm Danielle with Knight. It's Tom Fanner. This is Dan McDonald, town engineer. Um, thanks for coming tonight. Um, just, uh, basically, we wanted to set aside about an hour just to have a meeting about this Central Street sidewalk project, which we've been working on kind of on and off for uh, many years now. I think the engineering department started uh, the design for this between twenty thirty. Um, so I was just wanting to give an overview of the projects, what we're looking at doing, and then, um, give everyone a chance to ask some questions. Um, we do have some large printout of the plans, um, on that table. Feel free to, you know, come and take a look at them. Um, and I will give a brief presentation.
This is actually a pretty important thing, this sidewalk. If you went to town, uh, the, uh, foundation on Saturday or Sunday there, you will have noticed how many
No, can't hear you that well. We really can't.
Notice how many people were walking down Central Street to go to the cross, go to the park. So, um, that's a, that, we've been in the sidewalk on the street for a long time, so hopefully um, we can get something going with that.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Um, so just the project background. Um, a preliminary design was initiated by the engineering department in twenty thirteen. Oh, it's still not working. I'm sorry. There we go. Okay. Um, Central Street was completely reclaimed, repaved in twenty fifteen. Um, at that time, there was a neighborhood meeting attended by, um, over fifty residents, um, requesting a sidewalk. Um, there was no funding available at that time, however. Um, so the Phase One, Park Street to Spruce Road, was placed on our Complete Streets prioritization plan as priority number two. And Phase Two is priority number three, and that would go from Spruce to North. And a prioritization plan for Complete Streets is, that's a grant program that, um, if we have it on the plan, um, allows us to access certain funds from the state. Um, previously, um, this sidewalk project has been identified, um, by the DPW's pavement management capital plan, um, by the Sidewalk Committee as early as two thousand eleven, um, the sidewalk priority analysis that was done at the time, and numerous capital improvement plan requests, um, from the DPW and the Planning, um, Commission in subsequent years. Um, the Capital Improvement, um, Planning Committee did fund a final design for Phase One, which was completed in twenty twenty. AMIPA filing was made in twenty twenty. Um, that's an environmental permit required due to the removal of twenty five trees, and a public hearing was held at that time in October of twenty twenty. Um, the scope covered Park Street to Spruce Road only. Um, and there is a Conservation Commission filing still to be done, but because those expire, uh, we were waiting until we were closer to having a funding source. For funding, um, Phase One estimate approximately is one point two million dollars. Um, there are some possible grant sources. Um, the Safe Roots to School, um, which the town will be eligible to apply for next year, um, seems to be the best fit so far. It's one of the few grant programs that does fund projects on the level that we would need. The Complete Streets grant funding could possibly cover five hundred thousand if additional funding was also secured, um, but that is a more limited, um, grant program due to just us needing so much more money than that. A capital request will be submitted this fall, um, to cover construction or some portion of it, and a design for Phase Two, um, from Spruce to North Street. This is just a quick overview of the Phase One Central Street design. The sidewalk would be on the odd side, the northbound side of the Central Street, Park Street to Spruce Road, approximately, um, three thousand six hundred linear feet. Phase Two, should we get there, um, with these Spruce Road to North Street, approximately thirty five hundred linear feet. Um, that was included. We do have a full concept plan for twenty thirteen done by the engineering department. Um, but we don't have final design for it. So we would require a final design, additional MIPA permitting, and Conservation Commission permitting. And then, um, we have, we have three slides that just show the scope of the project, just to give you a little bit better of the sense. It is a little difficult to see even up on the screen. Um, we do have printouts of these, um, sheets showing the aerial view here up on the table. Anyone is welcome to come and look at them. Um, also, we have the project plans here, if anyone wants to take a closer look. Um, our goal tonight is just sort of to give you an overview of what we've worked on so far, and also, um, to see if you have questions. We may not be able to answer them on the spot, but if you are a property owner who has a particular question or concern, we'll make sure we know who you are, what your question is, and we'll make sure that your issue is something that we're working on, um, you know, as, as this moves ahead. Um, so at this point, Dan, listen, I have anything to add to that. I was gonna just kind of see if people had questions, or if you wanted to come and browse through the plan, and just maybe if you're looking for your property, you can help me find it. Um, you know, there are some places where, um, it'll say like R and R on the plan, remove and replace. There might be something in front of your house. It could be a fire hydrant. It could be part of your driveway. It could be a retaining wall. Those are things that, um, in the course of work, the, um, contractor doing the work would need to move. Um, one of the things that people often don't realize with sidewalk projects is just how much of the end of their driveway is in the public layout. So, for you, for putting it aside, especially on a street as narrow as Central Street, um, that it eats into the front of people's homes a little bit. Um, not the home, but the, the, the driveway apron is sometimes the very front yard. Um, so that's something we want everyone to be aware of, and if you have concerns, if you're not sure, if you think something doesn't look right, but please do let us know. Um, these are our plans that we're ready to send out to bid right now. We don't have a funding source. Um, I know at least one, um, resident has contacted us to say that he's pretty sure that the survey plan that we have, um, needs to be rechecked due to the location of the wall. We definitely will check anything like that, um, before, you know, the project goes very far. So, um, and just with that, um.
Thank you very much. This was really cool. Um, how far into the property does the town's oversight of the, like, the terrain?
Excuse me, could you please say your name and address for the, uh?
Sure, Parker Market, fifty five Central Street. Thank you. So, it is curious, like, how far into what we would normally consider to be our property would it be sidewalk work sort of inventive?
So, the goal is none of the sidewalk would be on any of this private property. It's fair.
It would be with the right way. But how, how, how far is the right way from where the end of the road currently is?
So I guess the best way to describe that would be to, if you wanted to take a look at these big plans, once we do, where I can even, you know, we can do
That would be my mind.
To say the roadway, I, off the top of my head, I don't know if it's
So, show. Do you want me to show the plans?
Yeah, that would be great.
Is that a forty foot or a fifty foot layout?
It's fifty feet.
Okay, so fifty foot layout means that if you go to the center line of the road and go back twenty five feet, that's where it begins with the roadway.
Yeah.
So go to the yellow line and go twenty five feet the other way, and that's the, oh, the proximity.
While, while the roads are not lots of, especially a lot of the older roads, and not necessarily directly in the middle of their layout, but when they, um, when the survey is going to survey, they have control and they, you know, they can actually locate it. I think some street is pretty good, pretty straight, so probably not too variable, but some streets like Abel Street wander back and forth, and the only street wander back and forth to do the layout somewhat. But just as a general, as a rule of thumb, go to the center line of the road, go back twenty five feet, and that's where, that's where your property begins, and the town property or the, or the road property ends.
Good to know. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Daniel, too, or Dan, um, when, so back to Warren's point, in deciding on the odd side of the street to put the sidewalk, was the, the trees a consideration, or there was more room in the right way, or?
Actually, uh, if you consider the fact that when it gets down to, uh, Park Street, that's the side where the, where the crosswalk is.
They're on both sides.
So, that was getting, yeah, but the sidewalk, that on the other side of the street going down the road, there's no sidewalk on the right side.
Continuing down.
So what then, what this becomes a continuation of the existing, if you will, the existing Central Street sidewalk, which comes
So that was, that was the deciding factor?
I think it helps to do that because it gives you, uh, uh, continuity from, you know, from point A to point B without having to cross, interact with any vehicles on the street.
I, I know too, that when engineering did their initial plan in twenty thirteen, and again, it was confirmed when we hired, uh, Millennium to do the final plans for this, there were fewer obstacles on the side of the street, just in terms of things that needed to be moved, like major things that are hard to move. Um, I don't know, for the cell phone poles or wetland areas or ledge, or just there, there was just less of an impact on
Substantial trees on the west side.
Right, and substantial trees here too. It's twenty five trees to be removed, but I think fewer, um, on, on this sidewalk. I'm admitting everyone. Um, yes.
Hi, Richard Craig, sixty five Central. Um, two quick questions. Uh, the sidewalk goes in. Am I responsible in the winter to have that shoveled? Um, can I potentially sue if someone, if I don't have it, um, down to the pavement and someone slips? And then the second is the lights that are at the end of Central Street on Park Street there have been great. Um, and I know technically they're temporary. Uh, there are plans to, I mean, if the sidewalk goes in, it would be great to have that kind of look as maybe a permanent light, because it definitely makes it a whole lot less, I mean, you look at the other end where North Street is, accidents all the time. Where Central Street is, when that light went in, that seems to have cut back on a lot of the potential accidents.
We'd need to have five hundred thousand for final design and construction. Just received a thirty percent design for the permanent segment.
Oh, so it's going to be permanent?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
We're waiting until Chestnut Street opens up. But, once that's something that's opened up, you know, create some of the, oh, airflow operating there and we'll finish that up, you know, hopefully by the end of the year.
I think your first question, what, what, all the sidewalk, uh, like, during the winter time, or the residents
So that would be up to the director and Public Works crews, and then they do I don't know if they would create that, you know, we can't continue on.
We can't hear you, Mark. I'm very much, very much
We're very much interested in that.
On the spot.
Did you hear my
Yeah, I guess I did. Yeah, and, and that is a great question. That would be something I'd have to, uh, consult the director of Public Works, and I know we have a fork machine, there'll be five to the sidewalks, and I'm not sure the Public Works brooms their routes or plan which sidewalks they do and don't do that at all.
I know that they were part of, were part of it, what you're saying. Um, I know some definitely
Basically, they're, they're supposed to clear the sidewalks within a mile and a six minutes.
Okay.
So that, that's relatively close to the school, so I would imagine they would do that. And I think that the new, they might do that, but then I think, you know, they're, they're pretty, they're pretty good. Those main thoroughfare sidewalks, I would think the DPW would be very much interested in maintaining.
Well, especially saving back to school.
That's close enough for kids to walk to school, so I mean, that makes a, a, a route that should probably be taken care of by the town.
Good. Your turn.
Um, Marry Fallon, one sixty three Central Street.
Thank you.
Um, one, the meeting in two thousand fifteen, when you said you had fifty residents that wanted it. We were at that meeting, and most of them denied it, did not want sidewalks.
It does show hands roughly, that's a, nine, seven people, certainly.
No, they didn't. Um, as far as the odd and even side, if you go back to your logic of the crosswalk being on Park Street, on the Park Street side, it's on that side. On the street itself, Central Street, all the streets that pull onto that, that have sidewalks that have just come to an end on Central Street, are all on the other side. Spruce, Pine Plan, Tamarack, all those streets pulling from that side. The, um, one reason why I think they chose it was because on the other side of the street, southbound side, that's where all you, utility poles and fire hydrants are. There are none on the other side. But if you do drive down Central Street, the side they're proposing a sidewalk isn't where all the trees are. Which, that's the side that will get the sun, so trees in front of my house would be knocked down, and I would don't want to have shade or privacy in front of the sun, because that's the summer. Um, there's a lot of questions that I have about this. Um, one, they say walking to school. I work at the middle school and live on Southern Street. I would not walk it even if there was a sidewalk. It's a long road. It is not safe for children probably to be walking on it because the, people travel very fast. They go down the hill and up the hills, not asleep, and I don't think it's a proper road to put a sidewalk, because when you do walk up and you get to that dangerous intersection of North and North Street and Central Street, where you just did a complete engineering project to stop accidents, that has not solved anything, because they're still having accidents. You've removed trees, you put sidewalks in, you put flashing lights, you put stop signs, you've done everything. It's a hill, so you can't put a stops, uh, any type of stops, so it's a rolling, you still have to go. And you're also on that side of the sidewalk, if you bring that up Central Street, you're leaving pedestrians into an intersection that they can't cross at. There's no sidewalk on that side of North Street, so they would be walking on the street to get to the crosswalk down by the lake. So you're inviting pedestrians to walk into trap them, so pedestrian incidents as well as vehicular homicide, which I don't think any of us want.
Not safe to have a sidewalk and people just walking on the street like they do now.
It is a country broad though, you know, I would say.
Like she said, people And if you are here, please take it to the chair, so that way everybody can hear what everybody else is saying. Uh, you have spoken, yes or yes?
Um, I just wanted to, so Allison Hughes, six 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 central.
Thank you.
Um, I do think you have some valid concerns. I'm not going to say that those aren't valid. Um, I do want to say that a lot of kids walk and try to walk, and there's a cut through in Winjuberry neighborhood, and that's how they would go. I do agree that the whole Park Street, Central Street intersection is a bit of a mess, especially in the morning, but if there was a sidewalk, that's more likely going to be the route. Um, there's a whole neighborhood behind us where the kids do it now, and it's dangerous. So, giving them at least part of a path would help.
Okay, yes, sir.
Antoni Benzina, fifty seven Central. Yeah, so she pretty much say everything that I have to say. Uh, hi. My name is So, I thought the same with that, like, you know, the, this whole sidewalk idea. Um, two thousand fifteen, they, they paved the street and they took forever, and I thought that was insane. And I believe that's a passing street, that's not a street plus sidewalk, that's completely unsafe. You guys are gonna make, like, get that kid left, right, with the sidewalk there. And the second question is, why is the sidewalk on that side and not on the other side, which is much easier for sidewalk? And, and then, and then the third question is, if you guys are gonna put a sidewalk there, what's the plan, you know, with all the halls that have, like, everything already done on the ground? I mean, I haven't been notified on anything yet.
Well, again, uh, brother, uh, Dan, as you have talked about this as far as some of the, uh, location decisions, but there likely won't be any work done on your property, because there is certain, quite a bit of room in what's known as the layout, which is the size of the area that the street is in the middle of, so most, the majority of the work will, I, and I believe all the work in this case is proposed to be done on what would be considered town road land.
Yeah, but fast, like, getting the sidewalk done, how long is it gonna take? We have two bridges, that's like, kind of, contracted forever. So, I don't think this town is capable to do, like, you know, a sidewalk right there, like, the timeframe that shouldn't be.
What timeframe? We don't have funding yet.
Preliminary discussion, I mean, it's years, this is a discussion now.
Um, we would be eligible to apply for a grant that we think is the most likely funding source next year. Um, if we were awarded and things did go well, and there was support and we would have a bit, then I think it would probably be within that funding year, and a project like this would take part of the whole street.
What's holding the bridge, like, my, what's holding the bridges to get done?
The bridges?
Yeah.
Well, the bridge, Park Street Bridge should be open. National Bridge isn't there now, so it's all, I mean, how quickly, so in two weeks, that should be open.
But what would they use that took, like, so long?
So if you go on the website, I did do a presentation a few weeks ago on the delays from National Bridge, their internal permit with Department of Public Utilities, which would be exactly the same thing for Chestnut Street Bridge, the scheduling. Everything just kept dragging on.
So sidewalk is gonna drag too, like, doing the, like, ongoing thing forever?
Yes, it is.
When the, uh, when the Abel Street sidewalk got approved, when they finally went into production, they finished that sidewalk in, I think, what, a month and a month and a half.
Yeah, it was about seven weeks.
The sidewalk, oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, good. The engineering had all been done prior, and, uh, actually, we had, uh, we had, uh, a contract to do the, pay for the engineering as part of their approval process, and so we had the engineering all done, so it was a matter of getting the funding, which we finally did. But once they did, and they started on it, they, they got to, yeah, in less, less than two months, that whole sidewalk was done, connecting the the sidewalk that comes up from the, uh, bachelor school all the way, it's connected all the way up to North Street, so.
Hello.
And that was
Hello. I'm on the Zoom. I don't know if you can hear me.
Hear you. Do you wanna, do you wanna take questions from the Zoom yet, or?
Um, yeah, I can, well, like, we kind of just jumped into the question. I don't know if you have more, any more representation to do, or if you wanna, please just continue with the question.
Um, we were done with the presentation part. We really just wanna
Okay, Dan, uh, please say your name and ask a question.
Yeah, it's Kristen from eighty two Central. Uh, I just wanted to, I did send an email to Danielle too. She had her email and the letter, and I just wanted to express my hundred percent um, support on this. I do have three kids, and, um, the safety of getting them, um, just on a family walk, um, walking them to the bus, walking them to the school. There is that cut, um, that cut street, um, near my house. It really just comes down to safety. I don't know how many um, accidents actually occur on Central itself. I haven't seen any in front of my house, um, as far as, as that goes, but it, it really comes down to the safety, and I think putting them in, um, really protects the pedestrians. I see so many people out here walking every single day, walking their dogs, walking with strollers, and, um, I just wanted to express my hundred percent support.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Sheriff, my friend.
Yes.
I just didn't catch Kristen. Kristen, can I get your last name? This is Jack Griffin.
Pearson.
Thank you.
It's just for the record, my office is on Park Street, so I look at the sidewalk across the street all day long, and there are some people who walk that every single day, every single day. There'll be a group, there's a group of people that walk that, and, and then after the school's out, the number of kids going back, I see a lot of use, so and then they, if they follow that sidewalk down, it comes to an end, I mean, unless they're going all, all the way to its main street.
Uh, hello.
Hang on one minute. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Katie Proff, fifty nine Central Street. Um, I'm in favor of the sidewalk. I've got a thirteen year old son who walks from my house to school, usually the other way around, from school home every day, and he walks on people's front yards, the whole, like, he goes outside. But that's not ideal either. People don't really love that, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Um, but my question is just more about the environmental piece on it, where, um, trees will come down. Will the trees be cut down and then new ones replanted, or will they actually move some cherry or trees or that would be on the grid, Dan?
It doesn't show, uh, promote planting, say maybe, if someone would be interested, you know,
Right, but right now, they just show, some trees move, some are labeled as, um, saved of the street. If it's, if it's too far in, it's really hard to do. Um, but yeah, right now, there wasn't a replanting plan, but certainly something
Gentlemen, back, do you have, did you, you had a question?
Uh, hi, my name is, uh, John Sutherland from Tenement Two Gray Lane. Um, a couple of things. Is there any, uh, crosswalks planned in the budget for, uh, those, um, designs, especially the cut through that we keep mentioning, uh, on Tamarack, where the kids possibly would cut over to the school, uh, from other implements? Um, my other point is, um, I agree with, uh, the folks, folks that it's an unsafe road and people, um, walk down that road. Um, people are gonna walk on the road anyways, and the reason I brought this up in the first place is that people are gonna walk on this road anyways. Putting the sidewalk in was our idea to make it somewhat, at least a little bit safer. Um, so the fact that, um, my son was loading the bus, and, um, there was a car behind the bus, and the car zoomed out around behind the bus and, uh, almost took out a couple of kids trying to load the bus, and we just know that this street can be safer, and this sidewalk was one of the ideas to try and make this safer, uh, because there are so many kids that, um, are on this street. My son actually isn't allowed to go play with, um, her son, because he lives on Central Street, and I am too scared to let him travel by himself down Central, and another friend who's on the Zoom, he can't go up Central to through, because it's just too dangerous for them to travel from Tamarack to Spruce on their bike, because it is, it's just too dangerous, the way some people speed up that road, so people are gonna travel that road anyways. The sidewalk is at least an idea to get a little bit safer. We know, I agree with you, it's still not gonna be safe with a sidewalk on it, especially when the sidewalk is right up against the road, but at least this way, it'll be a little bit safer, and I'll at least feel a little bit more comfortable with the kids traversing it that way, so it, it, at least it's a good idea, so.
Again, a lot of speed, speed on that speed, like, by my house, it's fast, and they come out my hill like crazy.
Daniel, is there, was there something you had?
Um, yeah, there was someone on the Zoom looking to be recognized. Well, I don't see a hand up. Uh, someone who is looking to talk, who was on the Zoom?
Hi, Crystal Shaw here from ninety five Central Street. I just wanted to echo some comments that were already made around being in full support of adding the sidewalk, specifically to increase the safety on our street. I have two little kids, um, that often play with folks on Winter, on some of the children on Winterberry. Um, I think it would allow us to take family walks all the way down to Ipswich River Park. Um, I think, as others have stated, there are people that walk every day up and down the street with their dogs, with their families. I see kids riding their bikes up and down the streets that are more middle school age. I think that having a sidewalk would significantly increase the safety of our community and allow more connectivity and more outdoor play for our children. So, I just wanted to express our full support of this project.
Um, somebody in there, um, I'll get you the same, uh, Richard Craig, sixty five Central Street. Um, I grew up in Summerall. I've been living at sixty five Central now for the past twenty five years, and I mean, to say that putting a sidewalk in is gonna cause potentially more accidents is absolutely ludicrous. I mean, people are walking on the street. This is gonna put them on the sidewalk. It, it's just, I mean, it's common sense that that's going to make it safer, but the other thing But the other thing, potentially, what, and what they've done in Somerville, because my parents still live there, is on main roads, they've actually put speed bumps. I mean, we have police sitting there on some of these side streets on Central Street and. Cars just fly by, we've had the radar detector things going and nothing stops these people from, from speeding. A speed bumps every so often would slow them down because it's gonna wipe out their car if they don't. And it's not just the cars, I've seen school buses flying down there, and like I said, when they, at sixty-five, they're coming over a hill. That, once again, you can't see over, and once they go over it, they're going so fast that there's no way, like, your kids, if they were on the side, out on the street. They would get killed. I mean, it's just, the speed bumps will slow the cars down. And people don't like it, they don't wanna damage their cars, obey, obey the speed limit. I mean, I can't believe that hasn't been ever discussed, I mean, it would be an easy fix, um. I don't know, has that ever been talked about, or is that even an option?
I think it's, I think it, it, it's been talked about in a number of different places, not necessarily here. And I've been in neighborhoods where that's been, been done, but generally in private locations. I think there's probably some kind of prohibition about creating something in a, in a regular roadway.
See, in Somerville, right by Tops University, it's a main road, Power Post Boulevard, they've got speed bumps all over the place.
They got, but they also got little signs telling you that it's there and.
Oh, I can't, we can't do that.
Yeah, we. I, again, I would have to check to see if the uh, if we could actually do that legally, maybe an issue for that, so. Yes, sir.
I don't know.
Parker Market, fifty-five Central, um, just again, just I'm here to get, can I get some answers, some questions, curious. Um, I think everybody sees the benefits of this, I also have three little kids that would love to ride their bike down to the IRP and waiting for the bus in the morning, be extra safe for them. But I think, you know, one side of the street is going to have to deal with any sort of potential negative externalities of this, far more than the other, because it bugs into their yard. And there's the, you know, questions that are, you know, partially addressed, and still, I think, kind of, there's an uncertainty to that. My, my question is, what about like water drainage, that if we built this up and there's like new, you know. And prohibitions on the flow of water that otherwise kind of just gradually works within people's yards. What sort of, you know, uh, potential flooding issues or erosion issues in people's property are we creating, and how are we gonna get enough?
Yeah, so I mean, if you, to pick up a sidewalk, it's gonna be a vertical granite curb, it's just a pretty, so anything from the roadway. It's gonna be in, remain in the gutter, and then we do our best to stop all the driveway aprons down into the roadway. Prevent any runoff, and then, yeah, and then the sidewalk itself has to be at least one and a half percent also for the road.
That, that's, that's great, and, and I think that it's, it's good that you thought about that. It, I've, I've seen the berm be added to my property, and it looks a lot better now, and the grass got killed and nothing ever happened, and I was a little bit concerned about this. But um, the, the, the flow of the water demanded change, even though it was to code, and there were some, you know, concerning changes in the way things flowed. And that's kind of fallen on me and my neighbor to figure out on their own here, and so I would just love to see in the sort of, the next phase of this process, some clarity on. What happens with the flow of water and if there are, you know, unforeseen externalities in the water flow, how are we planning to sort of redress that, if where the citizens were impacted by that?
It's doing food drainage.
Yeah, there's catchphrase, proposed catchphrase.
Yeah.
Way to go through that, more detail.
And I'm sorry, let's address again.
Who was that, the last name or address?
Um, actually both.
Parker Market, fifty-five Central.
Fifty-five.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you talked about the, the rate of the um, road and curving it down into where the sidewalk is. How is that gonna affect the side that doesn't have a sidewalk, if you curve the road just as much? Are they gonna end up with a debris and water and, and flooding on the other side of the land if they don't have a sidewalk to stop it?
The road's crowned, so the high spot of the road is in the middle.
Yes.
So.
So it's in the middle and you go down, but are they gonna do the other side as well, or is the road gonna be flat and crowned?
Road's already all, all done, maybe, and I imagine that they shot their grades on it to be sure that everything's safe. Basically what it has now is some of the country's due, some just drainage on that street. So um.
Very little drainage on that street.
You could, you could, for a second, what is the material you guys are getting, this asphalt, right? Granite curve with asphalt, correct? How do you do typically?
In the room for Nesquen, it's just right, right up to the curb edge, Simon.
Uh, the, the, the tree line, um.
Well, the sidewalk still, does it just go right to the curb?
Yes, that's, yeah, I don't think there would be enough, well, I mean.
Cause that's to the safety point, you know, the adjacency, if you have a Nesquen out of grass, you know, with trees or whatever, you can separate pedestrian group room. What turns out, we were discussing before my time.
I think because the street is somewhere, though, I would say, I mean, I, I think, well, the sidewalk design started, but. But the timeline isn't involved in it either, so I'm actually not sure if they ever looked at it before, um, but I can know that there's something that we could, you know, add in there.
Um, so my question is about Katie, um, Crawford.
See, we can all see, but code, yeah.
I didn't know, I, that I didn't know if I need to do it next, uh, fifty-nine Central Street, Katie Crawford. Um, it's just about the funding piece, the, from what I understood, the complex that was built at sixty-three Central Street. Weren't they, uh, as part of their building supposed to contribute a certain amount to this project?
Um, yes, they, uh, that project, I hope that they helped toward the end, and so all of their off-site improvements and their other extra things they were supposed to do for the town, it didn't happen. Um, as far as, that was what I was told when we first started thinking of them, um, but that was just a matter.
It was a bond, no, no, I don't remember if there'd been a bond, thought of bond on there.
I know, it was, it was a forty B project that just went.
That's right.
Um, it went bankrupt toward the end, and I think they just built what they could and didn't.
Forty B bank of our existence, yeah. All right, um, this, sir.
Yes, David Bragton, one forty-nine Central Street. So I'm wondering, and this pertains to the snow removal, if our house uh, happens to be further than a mile. Uh, from middle school, what we do in terms of snow removal?
Uh, I don't know what they, what they will, uh, what they consider a necessity in town, yeah, I don't, you know, the, uh.
I, I, I'm really not too familiar.
As far as I know, as far as I know, I've never spoken to anybody that, that uh, got, got any kind of pushback about not shoveling the sidewalk. A lot of people do it just as a matter of courtesy, but I don't know that I've ever heard of somebody getting in trouble for it, but at some point, that may become an issue, but I don't believe it is right now. And I don't, the, the town doesn't like just go to a particular place and just like stop and drive away, you know, they'll finish, if they do a sidewalk, they'll finish it, and then. The DPW of this town is quite good about taking care of business here, taking care of spout, taking care of sidewalks, and making sure people couldn't get around, so. Peter Blue John. Yes, sir.
Hi, uh, Richard Craig, sixty-five Central, again, um, in front of my property, I have actually, there's a stone wall and then I. Probably about fifteen feet of townland that this sidewalk would end up going on. Um, the curb you're saying would be right at where the street starts or ends, right? Is that correct? And then the sidewalk would be right there, so it's right, literally abutting the street.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, again, Dave, answer that question.
Yeah, there would be like a, it'd be the white fog line on the edge.
Yeah.
And then roughly eighteen inches, the two things.
My question is, like, on my property, like, and I couldn't see if there's something that, on the design, but it's kind of a hill. And so if you kind of dig into that and make a flat sidewalk, is there gonna be any type of retaining wall that would prevent? The erosion of a, a bunch of, of dirt and stuff that's holding up a, another wall?
Yeah, that, that'd be something I would definitely look into, uh, that people, that went up to there or anything like that. If you want to get any type of, but yeah, usually like on, you know, you've seen Chestnut Street, by the intersection, they put a granite, you know, landscape curb.
Yeah.
On the back end, to retain, cause there's kind of most stuff like that, I don't know if that's how you're just.
Yeah, it's, like I said, it kind of, like I said, it's probably about a two-foot, three-foot drop where it goes down, and so if you have to. Kind of dig all that out, there's gonna be.
That would expose, yes, and dive stone, come up with granite curb on the back end too, and, and, you're waiting to rip it out. Yeah, I'll take a look at something.
Hey, um, you had any further questions right now? This is just kind of like, this was um, a, uh.
Hi.
Okay, go ahead, Steve, James, please?
Yeah, um, this is Leo from one oh five Central Street, um, we moved in last year, so it's, I see the diagrams, still I have the, uh, the old names. Um, but it doesn't matter, it, this, this seems to me, it's, it's just a very, very early stage of this project, and we have, and every house has a different situation. And what I really care about is, so somebody cares about a mailbox, a tree, the road, the, the driveways, et cetera. What I really care about is, do we, so, so firstly, if we are going to do it, do we have, uh, like, uh, like the, the engineer or. Whoever takes care of this project, so we can hold, hold a, like, uh, like a small session or one, one-to-one to, to solve every. The questioning about, to answer the questions about every different house, because I think since like, different people, everybody has any, some concern about different concerns about their own house, right? They have what their own distinct situation.
Yeah, so I think, uh, you know, you are somewhat correct in that the, the, a lot of the engineering is done, but there's always gonna be, as they go along, there's gonna be a. A step-by-step process, some of it will be straightforward, some of it will require a little bit of ingenuity on the part of the DPW or whoever puts this in. So, but I'm sure that if you came down and took a look at the plan, that's already done, and see, and you see an impact on your property, and discussion with. The town engineer on the DPW could, uh, help you resolve that.
Oh, I apologize, I wasn't screen sharing, I think I was just showing the room, I'm just looking at some of these comments now, um. I'm going to screen share now, um, I apologize to the people at home, um. This was the presentation I went through, um, this is really just the text, um, but I'm gonna show you where I did a little overview of the scope. Um, and this is where we got into more of an aerial view, showing the sidewalk area. Um, I will post this online on our website, um, with the Central Street Project, um, information, um. And also, uh, there is also a link to the project plans on that same page, but I apologize to those, if anyone has questions about these images, which I realize you haven't seen, um, please let us know.
You bought the funding, um, that first group of funding, the Safe Streets, would that cover the bulk of the one point two million, because you said that otherwise it wouldn't be covered. Do you know how much they would be able to offer, because one point two is a whole lot of money for a sidewalk, I don't care.
It is.
It'll, I would say, it'll probably be way more, because that was the one, that was the, that was the twenty fifteen budget, so it might be significantly.
We created, uh, that was, I think, seven sixty-five.
The last time we had an actual estimate. Yeah, I think, um, so when we first looked at this in twenty fifteen, when the DPW was gonna do it themselves, it was like a hundred twenty thousand dollars, so it was just gonna be an asphalt table.
Okay.
But they didn't have that, so they didn't do it, um, and then when we started asking for capital funds to do it, we were getting quotes from the design engineer, um, from, from Millennium, and it was. In the five hundred, six hundred thousand range, we were looking for a complete streets grant plus a town match, and now it's been however many years since we first started looking at this, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, it's been a decade, so. It's, I think, one point two million dollars is probably the high end, but it's probably not an unrealistic amount for, um. What the type of sidewalk we're looking at, five hundred thousand from complete streets would be hopeful, but we would definitely have to come up with quite a bit of construction funding.
Are you able to give us an update on that batch program, versus walk to school, and how that's going, and that?
So they have successfully partnered, uh, the batch has partnered with Sacred to School, which means that the town is eligible to apply, and we just weren't eligible to apply in the last. Round funding cycle, because you have to have, had a partnership with Sacred to School for six months, so. Sacred to School, the program advised us that we would be eligible to apply, um, next year. So that would be, so far, that's the largest grant funding program we've found, that seems to be a good fit for this project, we're always looking for funding sources and other kinds of grants. Um, there's also the capital, uh, planning process, which, um, most years, either planning or DPW or both have put in a request for funding, whether it's for design or whether it's just. Some portion of construction funding, to date, it hasn't been funded, but that's just because it's competing with things like fire trucks and other huge town priorities, so, um, you know, we'll continue to let. Them know that it's something that is, is of interest, but, um, it, 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 it's difficult to get funding that way.
No, that's why I'm asking.
To bid?
Yeah, if it's possible for them to save to school, if it's possible, we can develop a whole point, the whole one point two, is that something that they said, is in, they're still, uh.
It is, yeah, that's the range of their type of worth.
Well, that's for phase one, right, just.
That would be just for phase one, right?
Do you take bid, I'm sorry?
No, go ahead.
Do they take bids on this, like, or are you just saying, all right, here you go, there's a check, and when can you start, or are you actually put this out to bid? Maybe local contractors or landscapers would be potentially interested in doing that?
It depends on the funding source, if we receive, um, grant funding from most types of grants, or if it's town money, then yes, we'd put it out to bid like we would for any other large, you know, public work project. Um, the Sacred to School program uses, in that case, the state would manage the construction and the state would use their children contractors that they pre-did, um, so. Depending on how the project was funded, kind of depends on how the bidding would, would happen, how the contract would change.
Hey, uh, one more time, yes, ma'am.
Um, I just wanted to just backtrack, first, funding for part one, you said you have the funding or you're still working on it?
There's no funding for any construction yet.
Okay, so my question is, it's taken you over a decade to get funding for part one. The first phase. Hey, you get the funding, you put that in, what happens to the second phase if you never get funding in that, to the sidewalk, just stop in the middle of Central Street by First Street? You just fall off the curb, what happens at that point?
Yes, the, the sidewalk would terminate, if the town was successful in funding a project from Park Street to Spruce, um, but then was never able to be successful in funding the rest of it, then there would just be a sidewalk from Park to Spruce, and that would be all.
So shouldn't this funding probably be put better use to smaller neighborhoods that, say like by the little school that only has one little patch of sidewalk? That, by the way, never gets filed or shovel removed, um, which are, and children are climbing over snowbanks to get to the school. Maybe they should put it in those areas for sidewalks in those communities where people actually know that there are sidewalks and they can be walking. Whereas when I purchased my house over fifteen years ago, I knew there was no sidewalk, I knew intentions of looking for a sidewalk. Maybe improve some of the other areas, or maybe even pay Law Street, which is a complete nightmare.
Or would Safe Streets, the young with Safe Streets, consider enough funding to, two point two, two point four million, and just do one phase?
Sorry, really, do you say, sorry?
John Suther, Tenement Two Ray Lane.
Thank you, because they, they can't say where it is targeted, so.
Could Safe Streets.
Need to keep it accurate, right?
Do one phase?
So I think if we were to do a sidewalk plan that was the whole thing, Park Street, all the way to North Street. Probably would be twice the cost, and that is beyond the scope of what Sacred to School, um, offers for construction grant funds. Um, we look to phase the project because it is a big project and because it's expensive, um, and some of these grant programs can, can fund portions, but most of them can't fund all of it, so, um. But, and the Sacred to School construction grant program is really something that we didn't know about, um, when we first, or wasn't available when we first looked at this, so. New programs can come out at any time, we'll just keep an eye out for them.
Yes, ma'am.
Katie Crawford, fifty-nine Central Street, um, along those lines, the Sacred to School grant, is that something that you can, when the town can apply for every year? Or is it like a one, one shot, that's it?
Jen, I don't know if we would be funded in consecutive years, but I can really find that out, we'll get back to you, I know for complete streets, it's, you're eligible for five hundred thousand every three years. Um, but I don't know if Sacred to School has a similar, um, limitation on their cycle.
Follow-up to that, is, um. Did other streets, like Abel Street and North Street, have a similar, um. Timeline to get their sidewalks on, was it like a decade long, it took, why is our street taking sidewalk?
Well, actually, I, the Abel Street one, as I said before, the gen, the engineering was done, uh, was paid for by developer in, in response to get putting a sidewalk on one side of the street. As I said before, the gen- the engineering was done, uh, was paid for by developer in in response to get putting sidewalk on one side of the street. And they kept the engineering done for Abel Street, but it was quite a number of years. Before the work is actually done. Some of that had to do with along that side of Abel Street, there was a lot of weapons, and so there was a lot of conservation. Mission approvals had to be, had to be gone through as well, so that they could, because they've got to work quite closely, basically, the weapons. So um, so there was a, there's a, there's a number of things like that. I don't know how many uh issues like that there are on this particular plan, but. But those are some of the things to slow it down, so, so. But then, once we got funding, we did, they did, once, all of the approvals were done, and the money was found, it went quickly.
That was my second, what is, let's get, let's get the the funding, it's.
Yes, usually if you get a grant funding, they want you to uh build it within that year of that construction season. Now, with Candle Street, we have the design done, um, but we were waiting for a funding source, and then the state came out with um Complete Streets that exists before. So as soon as they came out with that, we jumped on that program.
Yeah, yeah.
Got funded the first year, so.
But just like they were saying with the problem with the bridges, there are, there are things, there are permits, and there are things that have to be done, so. Um, so sometimes those things could take longer than you want to stay.
I'm the one we.
Yes, sir. Build canal for seven nine Park Street in both grants to be applied for at the same time, and then you can take the smaller grant and make that part of what phase two would be. So you can get more out of it all at once.
If they, if we broke it into phases, then then yes, um, there, so Complete Streets requires you to have your other needed funding in hand at the time you apply. So we couldn't necessarily submit dual applications at the same time for the same things. I think that may be harder to coordinate. But if we had, um, say, a Sacred to School grant for the first phase, which should cover that whole first phase, and then? Could also be simultaneously looking to apply for funding, but we would have to have whatever other funds were needed for.
Could the school of the the safe, the school grant being expanded? And then the the smaller grant, you say, hey, we just still need to secure the rest of the funds, could the other grant be in the rest of the funds?
Sure, I think we would just have to time it really well with both programs, because usually if you are going to be doing any other funding, they want to know, and then at the time, maybe more. Or even, I think, apply, but that's something what we will look at, um, as we become eligible for Sacred to School, we're already eligible for Complete Streets. So we can look at how in the time those two grants are going to.
Yeah, might be, timing might be a little tricky.
Yeah.
There, so.
Yes, Johnson, this is a follow up with Dan, was a question asked earlier, but we just haven't talked over it. Um, I asked about crosswalks across the street. Um, I know that the phase one ends at Spruce. Is there a plan in the uh in the blueprints to give the kids a safe crosswalk from Spruce? Yes, over to the?
To any adjacent street? That has sidewalks, there will be a crosswalk to safely get you across.
With signage and?
Signage and.
And maybe flashers. If that's budgeted or?
Yeah, that would be a change, but um, Tamarack is a crosswalk there, crosswalk at Spruce. And then I.
Okay, well, she she brings up a good point, having a sidewalk to the property, man, does, because, yeah, you put Spruce is a natural.
Especially.
Point, that's terminus, and so I think that because that's such a large neighborhood. Definitely be a natural. I think there's kind of like a natural stop there. Are you, I think, the crosswalks like midway from the, like the housing on like the even numbered houses kind of the street, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, any adjacent street, if they did not have, so like, when you rode, you could have put a crosswalk to, you know. But any other one would.
Okay. So then, like, uh, this, like I said, this isn't the end of the discussion. We'll be, there'll be more discussion as we go along, as we work our way through the. Applications to get funding for this, so certainly keep everybody, you know, up to date on it as well as in the paper. There's not too much else. We've got, we've got a lot of other things here tonight.
Real quick, um, Katie Crawford, United Central Street, what is, what is, when do you apply for it? You said next year, but when is, when is it?
Um, I have to look at when that funding round opens. Um, I've probably been said on when it opened this year, which was a few months ago, so I'm thinking it'll be this spring, but I will keep an eye on that.
Well, I thank you all for coming tonight, because, you know, we do take this all very seriously. That's why we make sure we get names. We, and all these will review, and if there are some questions that you need answered, don't be afraid to contact the planning office. Um, we do have, uh, you know, we can give you as much information as we possibly can. And again, as things go on, uh, we'll probably hold another meeting. It's uh. Always good to have as many people as possible to get everybody to think on how this is going, because a lot of times you'll tell us about something that we didn't think of. And then it becomes part of the plan, which makes it going better, so thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it's, hey, but maybe just. I know there are areas for digitalization, I'd rather. Not by, it's unsafe, it means safer, right? But I saw some. They're looking at that. Something with that here, right? About once. Just reference there, there. Regarding this. Great. And it was good. Right, I understand that, but I'm concerned, of course, and this is for. Two thousand thirteen. So like, I, I mean, yeah, I have a little bit of a question for you, and I don't want to bog you down.
Yeah, I think we've been finding, I think we've been finding overall.
Okay.
I talked to lots of people, I think we've been finding overall, that the majority of the people, especially the ones who are younger, you know, the, the, the. The ownership change you talked about, it's probably a lot of younger people that is, so they're even more interested in.
Oh, I think. Well, I mean, just to get it right, that's all I'm saying, is get it right.
Yeah, you've got to find a higher level than what it was before. Just because it all is zero.
Okay, yeah. So, again, Warren, when this comes up again. Yes, but so, and I knew we had, it was such an agenda tonight, so I held off on all of this stuff.
Well, you know what?
Oh, with a workshop, yeah. It's gonna be great. If we could schedule a meeting together.
Excuse me, uh, we have a bunch of agenda items.
Yeah, we'll take our discussion.
Thank you for your time.
Right, thank you very much for coming.
Good night.
Thank you.
That's the same, thanks, or, again, so I have to go back.
I, I think that.
Okay.
We've got time, we've got time, you know why?
We don't have the money.
Over there.
We don't have the money, and and you know, interesting times, if the town has to make something different.
Know what we have to do, one of the reasons, a workshop with you, because if we end up having to take it to town, we need to provide a lot of, the more people are educated.
Well, that's on, yeah, town meetings, and I, I mean, I went to believe me, Warren, if I had a spin.
I was already thinking all those things, but I know when the.
So many variables in a, yeah, and they don't, that hasn't been exposed to them yet either, but. Those end, those, those things need to be answered, you know?
Yeah, but I know when we, when we. Time to, this is what we're doing.
I don't want to be that so.
When you're going to say, we're running out of time for.
We're running out of time, we are, brother.
Okay, now, thanks very much, but we could have lots of quiet, so, thank you very, thank you very much, Jan, for coming tonight, helping us out.
Of course. Thanks, Dan.
Okay, so eight eight o'clock, we have the the public hearings for the floodplain zoning. Which I think is Danielle's, she'll be away with you, so. Yeah, she took off.
She took her off.
Yeah, no, no, she's gotta come, she's gotta come through here. Danielle. Do you have the floodplain presentation?
Yes, um, so this isn't much of a presentation, this is really just the warrant article, which I'm.
I have an hour.
Going to show you, um, the Attorney General's Office did approve our floodplain article. But suggested that we make certain edits to be fully consistent with. Date.
Right.
Well, um, let me just open that up. Well, let's make the fifth bylaw was approved. The Attorney General's Office did not actually strike anything. But they did identify a couple of places where they recommended that we clarify this language. Um, the first issue was the way they were reading it. It looks as though, because we said that the overlay district for the floodplain is superimposed on all other existing zoning districts. They said that that really could be construed as being the entire town, and that was never the intent, and that's language that's existed for many decades. It was just never read that way, um, but, um, so the suggestion um for responding to that, the suggestion from Town Council was to change that language to? That it was an overlay district superimposed on underlying zoning districts. Which is a pretty basic language change, but it does um not leave any question that it's the whole town. It should be, it should be only um, uh. Where the floodplain actually is. So that was Town Council's suggestion for addressing that issue. Um. The accessory dwelling unit language, um, so we have had for a long time, again, in the floodplain bylaw, this wasn't in language with this, this floodplain bylaw. This predates our current bylaw. Accessory buildings or accessory structures used for human abode were prohibited. Now, because the state has protected use accessory dwelling units, we're not allowed to say that we completely prohibit them. Um, so in this, they were recommending that we say, but accepting accessory dwelling units. And the reason for that would just be, um, we wouldn't be able to enforce that anyway if we had an accessory dwelling unit. We couldn't say you can't have it just because it's in a floodplain. Um, so because the building inspector would not be able to enforce for that, the recommendation was, we might as well change that language so it's consistent, and people know what will be allowed and what won't be allowed. Um.
Does that mean you can build in a floodplain? I mean.
You can, if you follow all of the other requirements that we? That we require for building the floodplain.
Yeah, I mean, the subject system is gonna be different.
Right, it would be different from a single family house, basically. They just don't want us to say.
Well, the thing is, in that case, it could be similar in the street, so it'd just apply out to the street.
It's, yeah, I guess so, but.
And so you have to be, so, one of the things they pointed out is that if we kind of? Group the whole bunch of things together, that we should have separated out of there, kind of what we did, so.
I think so. I mean, that was, that was from the floodplain bylaw as it was.
Yeah.
A long time ago, in our old version, that that language was was in there, and for many years, we just had a provision that if you have any type of accessory structure and it's a floodplain, you can't have it. And with the change in the laws governing accessory dwelling units, the state has said you can't just have a blanket prohibition on it. You have to, I mean, building in the flood zone is still pretty complicated, um, according to our bylaw, we have a lot of requirements. Um, but we would not be able to enforce this permission, like wholesale, just saying you can't have it just because it's an accessory structure and it's in the flood zone, so.
But aside from an ADU, though, it's a special permit, right? To build in a floodplain.
Um, so in this, it actually is prohibited, um, which is not really what most communities do these days, but that's, it's a pretty strong, it's, it's a pretty strong. Um, provision in that bylaw. Um, and finally, the last thing was not actually something that the Attorney General's Office um identified for us. This is just housekeeping. Um, in the, in the model language given to us by FEMA, this was left in and it shouldn't have been. Um, town slash city, we were supposed to pick one, we shouldn't have picked town, so delete city. Um, either the firm, the, which is the flood, um, insurance rate map, or flood boundary and floodway map. We, we have, um, we don't have the flood boundary and floodway map, um, so it was supposed to be an either or, not both. Um, so that's more of a housekeeping, um, deletion, uh, so those were the reasons for? The, the warrant article to, to clarify the language in those, in those two items.
Can you, um, also, just kind of segueing into the M B T A stuff, you know, that you were giving the updates on how to change the table? We explain to as it relates to floodplain, because that's how they were interpreting. How, so, is that just a miss by us and web model?
No, exactly.
Or my, is my interpretation that the land that was formerly not buildable is now buildable? You know, like, so clear that up, just so.
Sure, um, I will if I can. This is a really difficult one, but, um, so initially, who might remember in twenty twenty-two? We did a test review, and we sent our information, our compliance model to the state to be tested. They told us that because we require a special permit in flood zone, our two choices, and this is what they outlined in the letter they sent us. The two choices were, we could eliminate that special permit requirement for flood zone in this area, or we could exclude the flood zone land. So we decided to exclude the flood zone land, and then I had a meeting with, um, the representatives to see at that time. So that they could explain to me exactly how to exclude the flood zone land, and I followed their instructions, and I redid that part of the compliance model, and I sent it back to them. And that was it. We didn't hear anything further on it, and so that's what we planned to do, and they advised us, when you actually submit your application for, for three day compliance. Do a little narrative and explain what we did here, um, that the flood zone is excluded, so I did that when I, when I submitted the, the model. Well, we did hear from the state that excluding flood zone is actually not permitted.
Yeah.
Even though we were instructed to do so, um, and so because of that, there are certain density metrics, there, there's a list of density measures that, that each town is supposed to have. We hit some of them, but not others, and it doesn't affect every density measure, but it affected some of them. So their advice to us is, based on what we can see in your parcels and in your geography, and what we see in your compliance model and your G I S data. The town, we expect to be able to issue a compliance letter, however, it may not be exactly the way you apply this new zoning. It may be a combination of your zoning that you just did in combination with? A zoning, it's only districts that you already have in place, which was the underlying multi-family housing district that we already had. So I don't know really more than that. They were supposed to run figures and send them to us. Um, I don't have all of that yet. I have the first piece of it, which does indicate that our current zoning, by their compliance model, um. Could probably have done the job all by itself without changing the zoning, which is like, you know, I don't know what's going on about that.
How do you look at the model, because the model, the model goes from, you, the, the denominator goes from nineteen up to forty-nine. So meaning, it, it reduces, I should say, to nineteen, because they add in the floodplain, you know, area, right? I'm, I'm assuming, so that's like, they added in, what was it? Excluded land, you, you put in your email around ten acres, so excluded land is twenty-nine point nine out of this on, on your table, but ten of it was floodplain. So you put that in, that drops the? The denominator to nineteen point five, which then jacks the, you know, um, the unit, call it the D U A C. From what was before sixteen point five, and that's units per acre.
Right.
To forty-one point six. So my only question there that kind of is just, like? I was concerned about, is that setting the precedent for that overlay that you can do forty-one units per acre there?
No, all this is, so the nineteen point five plus ten, that number ended up not being correct either, because in the test review, they didn't tell us that we had actually inverted, um. The density denominator and the density denominator deduction. It was supposed to have been the density denominator subtracted from total land area. It, it, that number was actually not. If, if, that number was actually never correct. Um, they didn't identify that for us. So that was part of this sort of redo. Um, but it doesn't actually change anything about what could be built. It's just a reflection of, um, hitting their density metrics based on the acreage we have and what they consider to be developable land. So if they want to say that what they consider to be developable is, um, some portion of the flood zone, they could do that. It doesn't actually change anything about our bylaw. Um, is it an accurate representation of what could be built? I, I don't really know. Um, the compliance model says that more could be built than has been permitted there, but we don't have any intention of permitting that or building it.
I mean, do you get the sense of the state, you know, where, like, our aquifer, you know, we, we have a septic town, so like a lot of neighboring towns. So it's already sensitive in that where, you know, we don't have a central sewage treatment facility to kind of handle our sewage. So we're very dependent upon our groundwater and our ground to flow. Um, so I think where you have these very sensitive watershed areas or whatever, I just get nervous. I think they're just in such a pursuit to expand development that they're willing to, you know, um, violate that, that law of nature and start to like infringe into wet areas and, and it seems like, and then at the same time as you just showed up there, then you have the, the FEMA map that's, uh, and the insurance companies are like, you know, you build on this, you know, a lot of people, you're on it now, you're gonna, we, we, we don't want you on that. So your insurance company is telling you, we don't want you on that and we're going to jack your insurance up. But then you have the state saying, you know, let's, let's let them build on it. And it just seems like, um.
Hey, I think the compliance model is, none of those numbers are real. They are estimates according to what the state considers to be, um, likely to be developed. What they do when they analyze our compliance numbers doesn't actually affect what we have in our local bylaws we're building. So like, for example, if they want to consider that wetlands cannot be built upon, but flood zone can be built upon, that, that's not in our bylaws. So that's how they do their estimate for their, their unit.
Yeah, that's how they're doing their estimate. I get, yeah.
That's how they're, yeah, they're doing that.
It's in their model. I just get worried that then they'll put that into reality, you know, like they're, they're losing.
Oh, you mean by like something?
Yeah, you know, that's all, it just makes me a little nervous.
I know, I don't know.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Not even looking at you, sorry.
It's all right, bud. It's all right. We love you, man.
Keep an eye, keep an eye on Dave.
So, so my question is, why?
I gotta keep an eye on him.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So from what we just learned and what we're simping through is not original to what was approved on the town warrant article, correct?
No, there's no change to what's been submitted.
No, there's no change. They, 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 they ran into that.
It's how we analyze.
So, so my, my point is, so we had talked about the twenty, was it like, when we split the land, almost like forty-nine acres, I forget what it was. It was the big old seventy-nine, but what was it? Almost fifty and the other one was twenty-seven, I guess, yeah.
Are you talking about the total land area?
Total land, yeah.
Total land area is seventy-nine.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So now out of that seventy-nine, how much of that land was wetlands?
Well, not, it's, well, I think there's, there's, like you were saying, there's differences. There's ten, ten acres, I think, you put your email on a floodplain, so don't get yourself floodplained in, in wetlands.
The one still remains.
So, 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 let's just talk about that for a second. Talk about that for a second. So is that developable land?
Not, no more than it was.
That's really the story that we're working on right now.
That's all, yeah. Because, well, no, I understand that, but that was my, one of the fears in the beginning was that if we have all this land and we're only required to get fifty-five acres, why didn't we chip off the forty-nine point something and then just add another six somewhere else instead of bundling all that land in to be a developable piece of land? That's it?
I wouldn't be too terribly worried about it.
Well, I kind of am, Warren, because.
Our local bylaw, our local bylaws don't, don't want us to build in the wetlands or in floodplain.
Warren, what you were just talking about was the state and, and the land that could potentially be available and developed.
That's not what they're doing. What they're doing.
No, I understand it's not what they're doing, but Dave's point, today's point is they were saying that is now a possibility.
It's not possible.
It's not that. No, I, I was more making that jump. I, I think what Danielle's explaining that they're, they're using it in their model. You know, to come up with, in their model, to come up with the amount of land that's available. So it's, it's numerator and denominator. They're, they're putting that into the denominator or actually really to numerator to, to make that units per acre higher. And that's what the, that's the scary part. It doesn't mean you then build those forty-nine on, on the, on the wetlands if you're on, you know, the watershed area. I'm saying that it just jacks up the number. That's, so that's what I was getting nervous about, is they're adding in more land that you could never really develop. I mean, maybe good, I guess, but, um, and then they're using that to create that unit.
They're building up behind that cuisine, built right in the middle of.
So that's all I'm saying. I, I just, that's what I'm getting nervous about, but because that's in their model, but they're not saying build on that. They're saying we're using it to come up with the unit, you know, per acre.
It's how they come up with.
Am I describing it right?
Yeah, exactly. That's how they come up with the yield that they.
I didn't think this捋着.
No, it's true. It's how they come up with the number, for the number of units they believe we can yield. It has nothing to do with our zoning or our permitting or what will actually be built. It's how they come up with whether they think we're compliant, whether they think our zoning is good enough. That's how they, that's why they, how they apply this, these formulas to it. Just the way they apply the formulas is not.
Expressing nervousness, you know, that's, I'm just saying, like, you're, you're, you're right about expressing nervousness about that line, but they're just using it in the model now, but, you know, it's.
But, but, and the thing is too, when this came up, I saw it on the agenda, like, hmm, I read your, um, I read that. And I also, my head was just going in all directions. I'm like, okay, so what does this really mean to the people who live there? Is there, because, so the argument before was, oh, they're not going to do this, not going to do that, and you're crazy, they're not going to build, and they're not.
It doesn't change that.
But it does change something in their model.
It's changes how the state calculates whether we did what they said. That's
That's all.
That's it. It doesn't change anything about what we are actually saying is allowed by our zoning or how we permit or how people will, it doesn't change that. It's how, we're just required to report numbers to them and they put together numbers in certain ways to say you met all the metrics. They put together our flood zone numbers in such a way that really was different from how they initially explained the flood zone metrics get put together. And so you have to hit certain milestones for how much density you say could potentially be developed on these properties. So that's what the, that's just all, that, that's their interpretation of it. It doesn't change the zoning that was approved and it doesn't change anything about our, it's, it's, it's their interpretation of what they believe could be built here based on, based on what we submitted to them.
So the number of units will always be capped?
That's what our zoning says.
Forever, okay.
That's what the zoning says.
Period. On all that land, no matter what.
That's what the zoning did. That's what we needed to something.
Now, the Attorney General's Office has not yet renewed our bylaw, uh, have renewed our bylaw. So, but they have indicated we are allowed to put a cap in. The cap is nine hundred eight, which is the exact number of units that's currently under construction. Um, there is nothing about this compliance model analysis that changes that. Um, it's just, it's just the way they interpret our land area and what they believe the capacity is.
So was, was that information, would we privy to all that before all this unwound? We couldn't have been because the, so that's what I mean, it's like potentially the goalpost moved on something.
I think they didn't do a great job of, of doing our test review and then explaining to us how flood zone is incorporated into the compliance model.
And they.
Had they explained that to us at the time, I think we would have, I don't know that we would have changed anything about our zoning, but we might have included. So the other thing we found out is that certain town land doesn't count as developable, but it, it counts as far as helping you hit certain density metrics, which wasn't clear really before. So we would have included other town owned property, like, there are other things we could have done, but.
And you found out after that.
And you don't miss the goalposts and you just pay this wall.
You know, I'll give you a good example. The Title V inspection thing, when it was First King Brothers, a seven page form, okay?
I'm sorry, for what, Warren?
The Title V inspection.
Oh, Title V, yeah.
Yeah, there were, there was seven pages, it was a seven page form. And that slowly but surely after about eight iterations, it's now eighteen pages long. While they're trying to figure out how to get the answer to the questions that they want, they don't know how to even ask. Okay, so that, that, you know, I mean, so, so the fact that, that these changes seems pretty minor compared to some of the other things we dealt with, so. But they're really, it's, it's the state.
I think too, it's not even that their actual regulations themselves changed, but the way they explained it to us and the interpretation of it was very different when we went through that test.
Well, because you included email, that's where they told you not to include it, right?
I did, yeah.
Just to show them, it was you telling me not to use it.
They, they did actually tell us to exclude it.
Yeah.
And that was in the letter from the test review. And then when, you know, when they called to say this might be an issue, I was like, huh, hold, hold on.
Yeah.
Oh, well, the, what, the letter couldn't have been worded better. No, 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 no. We didn't misinterpret the letter. The letter was very clear. Also, we had a meeting after that to be sure we were doing exactly what you expected us to do, like that. It was, it was, um, that's hard now, but it's, it's been, it's been frustrating.
Thanks.
They'll get it right in.
Thanks for that explanation.
Those are the meanings right now.
I will tell you as soon as I have more from them. I don't have everything. We anticipate getting a compliance letter, but, um, whatever, you know, when we do have more information to share, I will be sure to share.
All right, well, we've got a few more minutes here, so, um, do you want to do, do we, uh, the open space and recreation plan extension? Is that something that we need to vote on or a week, please?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The open space and recreation.
Um, you don't have to vote on that, but I do just want to go back for one second to the public hearing for the floodplain. Um, so that if, uh, you would like to vote your recommendation to town meeting, you can do that now. Um, it helps sometimes going into town meeting to know what the CPC's recommendation is. Um, so if, if you would like to do that, I think there's a motion for it. It's up to you.
And just to backtrack, it would be just the language changes, nothing to do with the flood, the floodplain? What, what it wouldn't be recommending on the, on the M B T A or any of those?
No, the Attorney General Offices and Town Councils recommended changes to clarify those, those.
And it's those three items that you have.
Nothing to do with.
Okay, so then we need a motion to, uh, we've got recommend to town.
I have that if you like it. I move the CPC vote to recommend the amendments to section two hundred dash forty-four, floodplain district of the town of North Reading zoning bylaws to the October twenty twenty-five town meeting.
Second, motion is second. Do you refer to this guy?
Um, I don't think I read the public hearing, no doubt.
Oh, wait, before we did it?
I mean, you're also, I, I just think before we close the public hearing, I should probably read the public hearing. So you just finish your vote.
Oh.
Okay, well, actually, um, actually, I need to, uh, need to start all over again here.
I apologize.
Oh, yeah. Do you want her to read it and then?
No, no, I'm going to, uh, first thing I'm going to do is close the public hearing at a time cert, which is now.
Okay, but I, I don't think I need to read that.
Then now you can read your proposal.
I move that the CPC vote to recommend the amendments to section two hundred dash forty-four, floodplain district of the town of North Reading zoning bylaws to the October twenty twenty-five town meeting.
Second.
Second, okay. A motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. You good? You good, a few ears or not?
I don't know.
Okay, let the record show three in favor, even one of those. All right. We've got a few minutes, so, um, we'll get back to, um, you all set then, Danielle?
Um, yes.
It's a good space, what do we do?
The open space and recreation plan, is there, is there other things that you know of?
So there's no help that's needed. I think I mentioned the last meeting, we're initially advised that CPC would do an, would need to do an endorsement letter for this extension, but that's not the case. Um, it's really just an extension of time with, um, updates on the status updates, um, mainly for Parks and Recreation. Um, the last meeting, we discussed what the action items were, including the updates that were made, um, to the, to the action plan.
I saw you added the hill view one.
Right, added them about the hill view. In addition, there were, there was a comment made about, um, the kayak and, and other boat entry points. Um, I clarified that with Parks and Recreation. They just said that there, you know, certain areas that exist and others there isn't enough parking. So, um, that was the update on that item. Everything else, um, I, it's in there. I don't know if anyone had any, you know, concerns or, um, updates you'd like me to make. The next step would be it would go to the select work for them to see. They also do not need to endorse it. Um, and the goal of this really is not wholesale plan changes or anything really substantive. It's really to get us another three years without having to pay for another.
There never seems to be enough time to do that.
Well, we have another, we'll have another three, three years if they get extended, um, and then everything with your.
Right.
Warren?
Yes.
So on that, um, issue, are we, I, I think I asked this before, we're just looking for the three year extension. I get it.
Yeah.
Are we, and, and that's the purpose that we were told last time we met.
Right.
Are we, or can we make any changes to that at this point, or do we wait?
If you saw something in the updates, say that Parks and Recreation gave me or anything else that was that, that you really think is not correct or should be different, um, you can tell me and I can go back to Parks and Rec and let them know. But mainly these are their action items, um, for the most part. There are some things that are not theirs. There are a few things that are the select board or a couple even that are the CPC. If you see something that does not seem correct to you, definitely tell me. Um, I think that, I mean, we shouldn't be making
Well, no, no, also.
real changes to the plan because the plan itself gets updated every ten years. It doesn't really get, I mean, at this time, it's really an interim status update, more than a, let's do something differently. It's more of a, here's where we are. So if Parks and Recreation says, here's where we are with these particular projects. So that's kind of the purpose of it, but if you see something that should not be in there.
Well, that, well, so that was my point. So if, if there is something that is sensitive in there that should be changed.
Yeah.
Is now the time?
Yeah, tell me now. And what I'll do is I can, we can, if you agree, I'll make the change. I'll go back to whoever it was who gave me the change. We'll make sure that version gets sent to the select board for their, you know, for their eyes. Um, what, is, is there something that you?
No, 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 I, I'm not being specific, Danielle. I'm being kind of vague with it because there were pages and pages of
Yeah, yeah.
all sorts of cool stuff in that.
What Stephanie, you read, you see that some of these things were, were done, some of the projects were proposed and it's everything completed. So.
Well, I mean, my point was if there was, if there is something that is out there that maybe you should be able to look down a little more closely, should we push this along now or just?
I would, and I would say if you wanted to add to something, um, that we could, what we could add is the CPC recommends that this be looked at more fully at the next plan update. Or if there's a very specific recommendation that you have that you want to make right now, though now would really be the time. Because we, whenever we submit, it's, it's due on September thirtieth, so.
Essentially, what we did, we put the hill view in, as she put the hill view in at the bottom of the page as a recommendation, something we should add in. So they will add that in, right? I mean, you just give it to them and they're going to take, and she did write it in as a, uh, as, as part of the original plan because they're going to do the original, the original plan, they're just going to, move this one along for the three years, but hopefully they're going to put a line item to, to, to look at the hill view because we recommend you have to do that.
So I would say, I mean, I was hoping that after seeing it the last meeting and having it for these couple of weeks, that we would be at a place where we would be able to pass along this draft or with any comments that you have, I would pass along this draft to the select board. They would have a couple of weeks to see it. Um, I don't know whether we'll be able to be beyond the twenty-ninth, um, when they need. If it is, then I can, I will have to send it in on the thirtieth, um, with any comments or changes that they make. If it ends up not being acceptable for whatever reason, or we don't have it back in time and just we have to report on the extension. But, um, if you have something, yes, now would be the time. Um, but it will be, everything on there will be revisited when the next plan update happens. We'll be fully look at the plan.
All right.
There's the concern.
Yep. So, um, that, we don't have to do anything.
You don't have to take a vote, but I would like to know from you if there's a consensus for me to pass along the draft to the select board or if you had changes you want to be making.
Okay, so right now, I think nobody has any changes, right? Okay, so, um, so we don't, we don't need to vote.
You don't need to.
Okay. And the consensus is that we're all okay with the way it is right now. And then if you can, and to have it extended, just okay with us. Okay, that's where we're at. Good, okay.
One of the goals is to promote open space development, but we have here tonight, right?
Yeah.
There we go.
Actually added a little note about.
I saw that. I saw that. It was like, you know, hey, check, I saw one thing we could check off.
Hey, I'm telling you, I'm willing to be in the staff, getting into one of those, the subdivision that continue public hearing on Wednesday. And there we go.
So good evening to you, Man, from Man and Man, and legal counsel for this particular project, and John Bograk, who is the principal of Bograk Engineering, the applicant in connection with the, um, open space residential subdivision that will support your open space, right?
Right.
Um, so last time we were here, oh, and Brendan Pyburn, who was actually the designing engineer. So last time we were here, oh, and Brendan Pyburn, who was actually the designing engineer, is also um attending virtually. You should unmute yourself, Brendan, just so we can call on you when we have a chance, if we have to. So last time we were here, there were, we, you had not have the, had the opportunity to actually go through. The final comments from peer review engineer. Um, basically, uh they had signed off prior to that meeting. But you didn't have that in your package. I mean, you did, but you didn't have much time because you just finished that sign off, um going back and forth. We did receive um from them a complete sign off. Everything that they recommended, we completed. We addressed all of the fire department um comments relative to access um for the uh all the properties, including. Lot nine and um thirteen, I mean, six and thirteen, excuse me. We provided turning radiuses and the locations in an additional hydrant even because you have to be over five hundred feet. Um, and then we basically. Have just come tonight to do a couple of things, to go over any questions you may have, continue on the plan. And also to discuss with you names of those streets should you choose to choose um the subdivision approval. Uh, we had proposed the names Lucas Lane, Abigail Way. Um, and then we did receive uh some comments back and forth and said, you know, look at that list of historic names. Um, John Scholar, I can believe he scoured your information to see if he could find any historic names or Abigail Lucas. Um, he could not, but he could find Caroline. Caroline was a, was a librarian here for.
If I may, Jill, uh what I would like to propose, we talked about it at the last meeting, to name one of those, one of the streets Romeo Way.
Wouldn't it be possible to name actually Amber Road? That portion, because Amber Road really isn't a road. I don't even know, I I don't know if the town really did that. Because that's actually the street on which the Romeos live and raised their children. So we were thinking maybe that portion would could be um Romeo. I don't know if waste, waste sound or maybe Romeo Circle, Romeo Drive.
Yeah, yeah, but it's too small to be a drive, but there is no circle. Though I thought about it, Romeo Way is actually a way, it's a way.
Yeah, so we could, if we were supposed to have actually Amber, that portion of Amber be called Romeo Way. And then to name the two larger um subdivision roadways another name. I don't know what the preference is of the board. I mean, you have, you do have this historic name, but when I went through them, some of them. Are are kind of confusing with the streets you already have, and some of them are just very difficult. So I I guess I ask the board what their recommendations are relative. So what we would do is we'll show, we'll, we'll, we go to the select board for naming. We'll show Romeo Way as the street on which Mr. Romeo and I apologize, I can't remember the name of the people. We would name that.
Yeah, because both of them, both of them were police officers in town, both of them were very much. Contributed to the town. And then of course Pat was on the historical commission.
She was on the discommissioning.
Yes, and she's the one that made the list.
Oh, did you really?
She's a, was very instrumental in 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 uh. Some of these type, these historic names on some of these streets and everything.
Sure.
She was also a great contributor to the community.
Oh, she most certainly was.
And her husband was too. He was a great, great guy.
I I never, I I knew Pat from this board, but I had never met her husband. I think he passed before.
Yes, yeah. Yes, okay, well, that that that's probably, that's probably reasonable. Yes, I think.
It made sense to us because it was actually more personal that way.
So we still have two other roads.
We do. So um. Uh, obviously, John would like to name them Abigail and Lucas. Um, they are not on your historic list. Um, he also would like to throw in the mix Caroline. Caroline was a librarian in town since what, the eighteen hundreds, sometime in the eighteen hundreds. Who's librarian, historic librarian. So there is some reference in North Reading's um historical records relative to that name. Um, other than that, there are names on your, your list, historic.
There are, there are a bunch of names of people that owned that property back there, and there's a couple of different ones. But I, but it seemed to me that there was. Number of times that it kind of changed hands and got really confusing, so it was difficult to pick.
Amber Frey, that one. So it was Amber Frey. I think Art Frey was one of the people who owned it.
It's difficult to find one that was significant enough. I think that was the problem.
That was tough because there really, it didn't seem like that lineage was all that compelling historically here. You know, and in this particular district, I don't know. I mean, I I. I tried, I tried to do some research. He tried to do some research. It was.
What's the board's, what's the board's pleasure? What do you think?
Well, the Romeo thing is great. That's great.
Yep, we'll have that. We'll take care of that in a minute too. And we'll go, we have to go to select and obviously we'll do that. Oh, you should, I thought I had gone through something last time.
Subdivision ways, um if it's something isn't accepted publicly, it goes to town meeting, but otherwise it's.
Oh, all right. I thought I had to go there. Okay, so you just, Amber, it's gonna be on the plans. It's your, you control that completely.
I mean, we're not held to any standard here. I mean, uh, we tried, in the past, we've always tried to give things historic names just to. You know, just to move things along. And a couple of times, the historic names that we gave them didn't come out right and had to change them already. So, like the George Ruby.
Yeah, I would just ask the board to respectfully, um just requesting those names, um you know, with the endeavor that I've taken on. To go down this path with this project and set it on the correct course based on its historical issues.
Well, we certainly were, as you can tell, we, you know, we supported you in this.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
We are, we are, we were happy to have some rational situation going in there. And also, I think it's kind of a deep development too. It's a little different than what we've had, and I think it's open spaces, good things, so. So I guess um, I guess the board has their say here. What do you guys think? Shows what he'd like to do. I mean, it's not, we can do that if that you want to do. If you're okay with it.
So your recommendations were?
Lucas Lane, Abigail Way and Romeo Way.
Yes. That Romeo Way would get you past the select.
I'm good with that. That's what you guys desire. Do you have two kids? Three. Can you guess the third man? Put a lot of work into this. You guys really have. It's, it's awesome. I'm excited this thing is coming.
I just wanted to correct one thing. Um, the subdivision ways get named by the CPC. Amber Road, I actually don't know. It's not an accepted way, but it has been. Named that for a long time, so I don't know if there might be someone else who needs to be involved in the renaming of that.
So, because it's private, I don't think it's ever, I don't think it's.
It's not official. It's just.
I'll go, but I will look into it. I'll call tomorrow. I'll call the town. I'll call the Super Alberto and I'll find out if I have to go to the select board and I'll get it.
I think too, the two people who live along it have April Street addresses. If they had Amber Road addresses, it would be a lot harder because then they would have to.
They don't, they both have. Because I think Amber's not really, you know. But they could, they actually could, once we have it named though on the subdivision like that, they could actually put their post office. Because the way we're doing it, they could be, they could replace their post, um their mailboxes on the street.
Right, right.
Because it'll be, it'll be, you know, you obviously just know into that restoration plan. It's gonna be a nice payday way.
Yeah, go, go with the restoration.
Well, we don't have one historic name on it. I think that will probably keep everybody, yeah. It sounds like the rest of the board is okay with your name.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Danielle and I did go through the decision and I I I just, what I wanted to make sure is that we captured all. Because I know that this is pretty new for you, so I wanted to make sure that we captured all nuances of what the open space subdivision is. So just come, some of the things that I don't know if the board knows or wanted to hear. You read, and also because I also wanted to make clear that in order for that open space to be protected in perpetuity. I have to submit it to the executive office of environmental affairs. I can't just give it to the town and have it restricted and put a restriction on. Because there's some kind of concern that could only be for thirty years because of that limitation. So as long as I subject it to a conservation restriction approved by the executive office, then in perpetuity, nobody can touch it. So that's why I put in that language to make sure. Yeah, I I I'm not, you know, I wanted to make sure that you knew that I know. How it should be done and that's.
Yeah, I got it. Sorry.
I figured you were right. I do.
I do.
I appreciate that. I appreciate it.
So um, the lead, so we basically cleared up everything. Our, our. Peer review says everything is good to go?
Yes.
So uh you, so we have two uh. We, why do we have a clean, we have a clean draft approval and then another one?
The reason I put the track changes version in is because um when Attorney Man went through and changed everything. All the language that reflected single family house lots and changed it to reflect condominium. Um, I just wanted you to see what those changes actually were because it is very different from our normal subdivision decision language. But I also put in a clean copy because that can be hard to look at, so they're both in there.
All right. But we'll be voting on the one that addresses all of the different issues.
Um, so they, they are really the same draft. If I, all I did was accept all for that track changes version. They, they had, it's the same language. It's just showing what was crossed out and then what was added, but that clean copy would be the decision.
Okay. Okay, well, nothing, there's no other questions on the board.
I got one question. The clean copy has, does have some struck out? Is that intentional or seven B?
Not intentional. Okay, took a look at it. Um, the clean copy.
I think Danielle, what I do is I actually struck it. So where it says. Seven B, see, I actually struck that, Danielle, flipped right through and I I should, maybe I didn't do it with review. So it's just because it included below, it's doesn't take it away. It's just that it was already referred to. So you can't release until, you know, you satisfied the entire septic system. That isn't really how it works. It's because this has one big septic system. So the language I just in imputed in other areas to show that the statutory covenant can't be released until you literally are able to build. Which means approving septic system, whatever form that may take. So I'm sorry, Danielle.
So seven should go from straight from A to C. Um, we can ignore B. I'll make a fresh.
And B could be, you know, potentially omitted if you wanted, so you don't have to, or you can just make A and B only.
Before I, before I move on and open to the public in case there are any questions, any questions or comments, then I'll move on this.
So Jean Hardy, two forty-seven, April Street. So last meeting I was at, I I and I'm starting to think I made a misdemeanor unless. There's lots of conversations happening outside of these meetings. I got asked about the safety study. And I I did go through the safety study, but I still question the intersections. This, the intersection at Marvel, Marvel Head in April, North in April. And maybe Charles in April. From each one of those intersections, how far were the actual, how far do the actuals of accidents go? So my question is like from North in Heav, North in April. How far are the directions where the actual accidents reviewed?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question, but you're saying, in in other words, if an accident happened fifty feet from the intersection, it'd be included in the report. But if it was two hundred, maybe it would be. Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
So, so, so what, what, how far reaching, how far reaching is the research on accidents from the center of an intersection?
Brendan, are you looking through that right now?
I'm trying to look through it. I I don't know that answer off the top of my head. What I, what I could say while I'm trying to pull it up is. The measures in the study that was performed is typical, is industry standard um across the board. But I don't know what that, what that boundary is that you're looking for off the top of my head. And I don't, and I quite frankly, I don't know if it would be referred to in the report um either.
If a police officer puts that in their report, that's where it gets logged in at. The accident occurred at this intersection. So they're making that.
Or so many feet from that intersection.
Yeah, they might put that in. But it's a good question, but I think it's just. That's how they find it. It's police report, so.
And well, the reason I'm asking is, you know, North in April is point one. Like one of a mile, so five hundred twenty feet from my driver, which is, you know, twenty feet south of the Lucas Lane. And there's lots of accidents between North Street and um Eisenhower.
Is it just people pulling out and they get?
People going too fast and they.
Coming the other way.
Too much speed on the road. Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about.
And um so that's, that's where my concern with safety is, is because when people are pulling out of Lucas Lane. The sight line isn't, isn't huge, and with the amount of speed, there's going to be, I I'm concerned about the. Increase in accidents right at that point.
Right, so that is addressed at a traffic report.
How about, I don't know, I mean. Traffic, traffic coming, coming, uh, new, coming north actually.
So about.
Coming, the traffic coming north, there's a polar idea that's been taken out a couple of times.
Since I've lived there, those two poles have been taken out, uh, each one at least four times.
Yeah, so, and because I just live right up the street, they took off to pull right behind my house, too, at my point, going too fast, so. So um I would say that probably the only thing I would, I would suggest. Is because it's gonna be Lucas, Lucas that comes up right there, that just prior to Lucas is a sign that says traffic entering and exiting. And maybe seeing that would slow people down a little before they even get to that.
Putting traffic slowing measures on sign.
Well, interestingly, uh, going northbound, there is already a sign. That says Dean Russell.
For uh, but but for which intersection?
North Street.
But I want one before Lucas, I want further back. I want it to slow down before they.
But in the, the speed limit drops at um. So it drives down to thirty miles an hour at full leaf.
So I have a question, Mark. It's al- almost, well, a lot of times we meet and we hear about speeding traffic to town all the time. Somebody want to put speed bumps in the road tonight? Slow traffic down. I get it. It's a problem, but you know, I'll just tell you my own personal experience and it probably wouldn't take much to do. You know those speed limit signs when you're heading into Andover and it's on the right rate by Phillips? And you get that big smiley face at twenty-five miles an hour. I really slow down twenty-five miles an hour to get a smiley face. Just me, you know, and something so simple has such a psyche on me and it works. And I do, I slow down when I see something so simple. I'm not saying it works driving by. But we have a lot of areas in town that maybe something just simple like that, Warren, a suggestion, would probably not take a lot to do.
I'm not sure. You mean one of those electronic signs?
Yeah.
Yeah, the solar speed check.
I mean, that, if you're, the select would have to approve that, but. You know, you can't put, you know, that's not, that's just a town road, so you just need to have their permission to do something like that. I mean, again, we, we have no problem putting in place traffic calming measures um at all. You know, we did things, you know, like we reoriented the road. We made it safe or the site distance is actually quite good in both directions for our intersection. But in order to help the general community, putting slowing traffic sign measures, I mean, we have no issue doing that.
Well, I think, I think to go back to this day's original question, I think um. Trying to figure out how close the, obviously I understood your question, but but uh trying to figure out how close an accident is to it. I think that what, what, what normally is done, what Brendan started to talk about was. There's a site distance, you know, that they measure, and they have to meet a certain site distance for the speed that's on that street. A lot of, when they do traffic studies, they actually gauge the actual speed, but then they look at the site distance, how far, can they see far enough? So that a vehicle can see another vehicle and slow down safely. So that's basically really it's, and not really, because the accidents tend to happen. Where the two roads come together, so not very far away, but you really want to get a control on the situation before they get that by. And and you do that by making sure there's adequate site distance. I think that's the answer to your question.
So we don't know the actual, so that's the answer.
Well, again, I would say the majority of the accidents happen right at that intersection, right, where the two roads come together, not fifty feet up the road or two hundred feet up the road.
Well, at the intersection of North Street, you're saying?
Yeah, or 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 in by Red Street, or any of them.
She's talking about the traffic going crazy and hitting the pole, which is ongoing traffic that I can't control and my subdivision doesn't.
I don't understand, it's a straight road right there, it's a straight road.
It it's a curve right there.
Well, well, before you get there, the one, yeah, yeah, well, they come around that curve and then they hit the hit the pole. But they but they gotta slow down to cover on that corner, it's just crazy, so I don't know how they do it.
So pole that is going to be at the corner of Lucas Lane, it drive by, you'll see, it was taken out Christmas Day.
Yeah.
And it's still in half and they just kind of attached it to. Right. So that that's where where I'm talking about, and that one was coming.
But there was plenty of sight distance, and it was a single car accident, so it was not anybody else to know, so. I guess, I I I didn't control that, just it's speed, right? So I mean, I mean, I mean Jeff's idea about distracting them with a with a picture is not 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 a bad idea, but but I don't think that's, you know.
I mean, if they did, they did the uh traffic study and there was no.
Plenty of sight distance.
Right, I think it's 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 a speed issue, I think maybe it's something that it's a town issue really, if the.
Right.
You know, not not to, and I'm not trying to, you know, dump something that you're developing around. Um, I just think that that is a tough area, you know, when you're coming down, you know.
That road is a little wide.
Yeah, it is a little bit, so I don't know.
There is enough room. I just there really is no excuse for. Okay, thank you, ma'am, for your question anyway, we do the best we can with this. Alright, uh, any any other comments or questions from the public on this?
I I do have one more question.
Yeah.
Uh, so the the next step, I I know there's already a drafted approval. Um, the next step, because one of my other questions has been the blasting, and I know that you have to get the approval and then at some point, you'll have to determine if there will be blasting of the ledge. So how does, how does, what is the next step after this agreement?
Well, as far as the blasting goes, whatever, whoever the contractor is, we get a permit, because the fire department gets involved in that, and they have to, people come out besides modelers, out and all that stuff, when they do the blasting, to make sure they're not impacting anybody that they're close to, so. But that's all part of a construction sequence, not, you know. I you don't even know for sure how many blasting you're gonna do.
Are you are you asking when would that start, is that?
So the first thing that happens is we actually go out and do site assessments, because while you see ledge outcroppings, you don't know the depth, you don't know if it can be taken out. You don't know the type, you don't have the shale, so you can hammer it, you don't know what it is. So you roll out, you do a full literal inspection, every area where the load is gonna be, you do individual, for lack of a term, test kits, little investigatory kits. Once it's determined what the method would be, then the site contractor actually goes. And in addition to going to the fire department, getting permits, they go to every home in a certain area, if there is going to be blasting, and we do what they call.
Pre-blast survey.
Yeah, pre-thank, pre-blast survey, all the properties, and they assess the integrity of homes, like whether or not there's any activity. And then to Warren's point, they put seismic detectors out around perimeters. So and the point of that is, believe it or not, to protect the insurance companies, because a lot of people say we had issues. But then if if you, if a house says it has issues in the size, the reader said there was absolutely no seismic activity, you know it was. But then you can also say, okay, look, there's a huge seismic activity and there was a repercussion, um, so they do that. And there's an insurance policy that's in place, that if anything happens, there's recovery, you don't look just to a developer, you look to an actual insurance company who covers any and all claims. Um, and then the fire department has to be notified, they put what they call the tone out, so you'll hear like a long, letting you know it's gonna happen. And then they do, then they do the blasting, and it's not like, John, how often do you blast a real blade? Like you have to blast, clean up.
There's only like, you do two or three most and most of the day, sets the mats and.
That's right.
You gotta floor all the holes and.
You you think about spring, we only can start in the fall, then it'll happen in spring. So spring, fall, so the the plan would be spring, fall, where there's no way to stabilize, I think, in the middle of the winter. So we're looking at probably, you know, taking down trees, come when all the leaves are off them. And then doing any kind of blasting between spring, fall, way to fall.
Did that answer your question, ma'am?
Um, I think so.
Okay.
So we we would, as a bunnies, we would get noticed.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You got a lot of.
Little league on my cropping line.
You don't just get one of us, you get a P.
Okay, does anybody else have any comments or questions? Hey, here we're done, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And uh um. And there's better, any for no further discussion, then I will call for a vote.
I've got a motion.
Motion, please.
I move that the CPC vote to approve the plan entitled Open Space Residential Development, OSRD, definitive subdivision Lucas Lane and Abigail Way, Seven Charles Street and Two Forty-Nine Haverhill Street, North Reading, Mass, dated February first, twenty twenty-five, last revised July tenth, twenty twenty-five, drawn by Bulwark Engineering and Construction, subject to the terms and conditions of the Certificate of Conditional Approval dated nine sixteen, twenty twenty-five, as amended this evening.
Perfect. You seconding?
Yeah.
I have a motion and a second, if he's ready for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. At the ready to show four in favor, no opposed. Well said, John, let's uh.
Thank you very much, we're excited for the project.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Yep. We look forward to seeing this, this should be great.
Oh, yeah. Advice, try to keep the neighbors notified of everything you're doing, like almost think about a newsletter that goes out to all the bunnies so that they understand the whole schedule, that way.
Our streets right there, so we'll try to do this kind of, you know, drop a little fire talk when people. Say, okay, look at.
It's not an every week, month thing, it's just when you kind of know the schedule.
Be amazed at how a little thing like that.
We're trying to be as long. Take care.
We have town, we have town old man on here again, so.
I have a few questions on that. Whenever you you open it up, I mean. I won't be long, but.
Go ahead, go ahead, Jamie.
No, I was gonna say, um. Yeah, okay, so you wanna jump into that, is is there any um? Give me, yeah, like, is that something we can?
The Anthony Road, except I think that's what he's talking to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's it's nine o'clock, we have business.
Oh, yeah, they do that, do that. With that other stuff.
Just about anybody who's here, yeah.
Request for a extension, sure. That doesn't need much, except for a motion and a vote.
Just a motion and a vote, yeah, and the explanation that's given in the letter that.
Yes, yes. See, pick them up, we have a lot of other stuff going on, but Jeff didn't forget him, you're good.
I move that the CPC vote to grant the requested extension of time to complete the Seventeen Anthony Road definitive subdivision, including the binder utilities and drainage for one year until October seventeenth, twenty twenty-six.
One second.
I I have a question, yeah, I'm sorry. So. So you just. Give me a minute, before I say anything.
Let me just, to this point, this is not an unusual request. If we if we if we have a, if they have trouble with some of their permits, I have trouble getting their letter, all the things that they need to have, you know, to move along or gun station or one of those, or all those things, it's not unusual for them, because it's not really started doing anything right, right?
Oh, no, they're well, they're well underway.
But we were just able to start a month ago because of all the appeals that we dealt with.
So see, they they got dragged way back, so now they need the extra time.
Because otherwise the subdivision gets rescinded in two years if they haven't finished it, so they just got to start construction, it was the national grid usement and other delays. So they wanna be sure they can finish construction.
This is not unusual. Thank you very much.
Is there a function to bring this earlier than the one you, or?
No, you don't, you don't need to, I mean, as long as they finish it within that timeframe, if they if they get it done early, it saves them a lot of money. The longer they have to work on this, the more it costs, every day, every day is money.
Okay.
So um um, so they don't want to do this, but they have to do this. So thank you very much, so we have a motion and a second, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, let the ready to show four, trade and no opposed, and all set, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do do the same thing we told the last people, I keep the neighbors informed about your progress, if you can.
I have, and I kind of. After the ones to correct your bodies almost daily.
It really, it really helps, really makes a difference to them to know that you care, so. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, where were we?
What'd you say?
No, no, I, you know, we should, we didn't, we we should have got take care and course sounds your course out, so much, appreciate this. Keep in mind, things that sound. Alright. So town old man, a couple of things have been looked at, I guess, but again, just so everybody understands, all those pieces of property, your property that somebody has made a request to purchase, so. Um, um, a lot of them are, nobody really cared about them. You know, whether or not they actually buy them or not, has to do with the pricing and all that, but uh, did you have some other concerns about Dave?
Yeah, me, because none of these are, you know, near me, or I don't need a piece of parcel, but I'm just thinking of my fellow resident, you know. I'm looking at the heading on here, and it's the assessed value, so it's what the town is assessing it at, if you go online, look up the property and, you know, the tax card, you'll see that's the assessment, and what's, if you look at neighboring properties, um, same square footage or whatever, you know, they're they're assessed somewhere around maybe five dollars per square foot. Um, even like, or like, I'll give you examples, go to go to Lincoln right here, to Lincoln, three hundred sixty thousand, three hundred dollars, they want for twelve thousand square feet. Um, and this person's looking to, you know, add to their property, maintain curb appeal, blah, blah, blah. On that, if you look just one door down and go to, and I'm not gonna say it, but you know, on Lincoln Street, if you have just land, same thing, just land, and it's, you know, well, thirty-eight thousand square feet. So this is twelve at three hundred sixty, three hundred, and that's it, that's the twenty-six assessment for twelve thousand square feet, that's thirty dollars per square foot. And then you go just right next door on a almost a one acre lot, and it's assessed at four hundred thousand. It's only ten dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Is Lincoln Street off Edgemere?
I know, I'm just grabbing examples, and I've got more, if you go to Highland.
Did you go up to Lincoln Street?
No, I'm not getting into whether it's a good, I'm just saying, right next door, you've got ten dollars.
A plow winner.
Alright, well, there you go. I I don't care if you're probably in the street, I don't want, I don't want to believe in this argument, I'm just saying, what I don't understand here is that.
You get around the corner and divide and the and the, it's the, where they hit the banjos.
Alright, but this.
I I I think what you're getting at is maybe a more a more of a question for the assessments office.
Yeah, that's just one lot more, but if you kind of let me finish, Mr. Chair, um, I could do this all the way across the whole, all of them. They're they're assessed at four times what everyone else is being assessed at, how is that fair to? And then, and they're just people trying to add eight thousand square feet, some of them are twelve hundred square feet, and they're being told they're like fifty dollars a square foot, whereas anyone else around, and then just look how crazy this would be, if that person then were to buy that property, even if they got it, they offered the town, because it went to auction or something, and they got it for way less. If the assessment's still that, they would have the most highest assessed home on the na- in the neighborhood by like a backer or two.
I think though, Dave, I think that what happens is if they agree to sell that piece of property, they will take bids on it.
I get it, but so it's already assessed, so.
Don't come anywhere near that.
So so I was in a select board meeting a year ago or so, and the same type of issue came up, and somebody was looking to purchase piece of land that just, it it really wasn't that useful, it was a giant, right? There's not much to it, and and the select board recognized that it was just something, like you said, like whether they're extending a leaching field or whether there was nothing, there's nothing you can do.
But you have this high assessment.
No, 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 so so what happened was, right, so the so the select board, I think you're right, like the five dollars or whatever it is per, could, because that property, there's no gain right now.
Right.
For the town to sit on it, there's no gain, we're not taking any tax dollars, even, there's nothing we can do for it, half the stuff, like you said, it's twelve hundred square feet. So if we attach that to somebody's property value, and we add that square footage, our tax dollars, our income for the town goes up, whereas before we were getting it, so.
But here's the problem, though, there. Like it's a charade, though, because there, the town's representing to the residents, like, we've got all this land, if we get rid of it, it's gonna be this much in tax, this is all fake. Well, and that's three, four, and five X what they could really assess the stuff for, so when they tell the town, we've got five million dollars worth of taxable land if we get rid of, and I've heard that at town meetings before, why don't we get rid of some of our land? And people are saying that it's so over assessed by anyone's measure, it's not real.
And I agree with it, I agree with you.
Jeff, let me ask you, do you remember, did that, what did they pay for that piece of land, do you remember?
Did they do the five bucks? So all I remember, it was just such a little amount of money, but yet.
I think that's the, that's the key, because right now they can assess it whatever they want, but when it sells.
Is totally.
When it sells to six thousand dollars, that becomes a new value in that land.
Your whole. Assessment versus valuation, yeah, I mean, that's.
Well, that's different, that's.
I think your question is the assessment office, how did you attach these numbers to it?
Yeah.
But what something is.
That's a phrase, that's a phrase, or it's actually inherent value, I'm just saying, that's why it's key to focus on assess, this is from the the the, you know, tax assessors, and their property right next door, and then again, are like one third, one quarter of the price, and it's the same product, land and land. And then if you look at just the going rate in North Reading is about fifteen dollars, I mean, for a buildable lot, you know, so for forty thousand square feet, it's around fifteen to twenty dollars per square foot, so here they're charging thirty-five to forty dollars. You know, and when I say charging, not charging, and when have you ever seen assessed values, anything near market value? So I'm giving you market value, fifteen to twenty, it's.
So my point is.
Double market.
So my point is, Dave.
Who's gonna buy this?
What we're talking about was sold at a select board.
Yeah.
When?
I was like a year ago, I figured.
So what's this then?
So so I I have no idea, but what I'm saying is.
I think that's what I was trying to tell you, Dave, is that, is that what happens when, if the town, if if the, if we say, we have no use for this land, okay? But uh, we we take a piece of land, we say, okay, we have no use for this piece of land, and then the people that wanna buy it go to the selection and say, okay, I wanna buy it. But um, I, you know, it's, I, that's too much money, I'll give you this much money for it. And if the town figures it to be, unless, if they look at it and say, well, yeah, it doesn't look like anybody would give any more for it, so uh, you know, so we'll sell it to them for five thousand bucks, and that's.
Cause cause there's there's literally no value.
So we need a process then, is what I'm saying, right? Is that, that's what I'm saying, like, you think a lot of these people have been asking, I've I've talked, I've spoken to a couple of them, because they've literally reached out. Like, why do you wanna buy the land, and they've been trying to ask the town now for four or five years.
Yeah.
And there's no process, and then this is what they come back with, like, so they're intimidating people that, like, you you need three hundred sixty thousand to buy eight thousand square feet. You're going, what, I just wanted to add a little bit so I have some more per septic or whatever.
Well, I don't think the assessed value is the asking price. Even the. You gotta remember that, they're gonna, whatever, let's say they twelve hundred square feet out of the forty thousand square feet, that's not gonna be part of their new property.
I agree.
And it's gonna be assessed.
Uh, assessed differently.
Differently and not a part of.
What I'm saying is just.
I'm with you, I just think that the. Be able to answer that question.
Yeah, they should be doing.
I couldn't agree more, I started looking at those assessed values, and I'm like, whose idea was this? I know a lot of these roads.
I'm I'm a, I'm a cynic, but I just think it it. It it has roots back in town here of some report, some conversation, saying, if we get rid of some of the land, we get like five million dollars worth of assessed land, and is it really worth five million dollars, you know?
I don't think so.
It's not, like, we're we're hurting for tax money, but.
Our job, I think what we're.
No, I know, we just, um, you wanted, I think, to comment on it, I'm commenting.
But they wanted us to comment on it, so whether or not, whether. But they wanted us to comment on it, so whether or not, whether or not are we, um, whether or not we thought there was a, 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 a use for the town of any one of these pieces of land, if we didn't see a use for the town for any one of these pieces of land, and we had no need for it, and then conservation has no need for it, and not, box direct doesn't need it, nobody needs it, then the town says, okay, we're gonna release this piece of land to be sold, and then the person that wants to buy comes in and plays, let's make a deal.
And the, the clarification on that are the, is, is the note kind of in parentheses with the, so Carpenter, for instance, that's a valuable parcel, you know, when you say to the town, so the people, uh, I don't know what address, um, Carpenter, if they're carpenters, well, they're looking for ten thousand, yeah, because it's, that's the parcel, so, they're looking for, they, they're looking for ten thousand, so, um, if that's the, if that's the question, Warren, you know, in, in that sense, like, we, we, we're not looking to sell, if you will, Carpenter, right? It's the, it was just that ten thousand, right? I just wanna put.
Yeah, these are the notes that I exactly.
So, that's kind of what we're talking about.
Anything on this list, is there some reason the town should not sell, that's what they want?
Yep.
I will be happy to pass along the, uh, uh, comments on assessed value, I can't.
Yeah, and I'm not, not in the assessors department, you know, like, Debbie, I'm, I'm saying, it's just crazy, though, like, if you're trying to buy like a little piece of land in the butter, and who gets, either you or your neighbor wants to buy the thing, and you can talk to them, you want it, you want it.
If there's anything on here you don't think we should let go, I will note that, um, and then, you know, then the fact, so that.
Yeah.
So, I, so, so speaking of three Carpenter, my, my question with that piece of land is, the, it's ten and a half acres, someone's requesting ten thousand square feet, does the ten thousand square feet, does that land walk?
To take away the access.
Yeah, that'd be the good question, like.
So, there's an act, there's an access road there already that killed there.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah.
Because the guy who built, bought, cut that piece of property right to, right to the right side.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, he, the part of the deal was, he could do that as long as he put the road in to give us access to Carpenter, so.
Got it.
So, that's, so that access is already there.
So, the ten thousand would just be.
Just be like.
Right beside the road there. It wouldn't be like across.
Yeah, I don't know, I have to look at the, on the site map to see exactly where they'd want their ten thousand, but, but we obviously would not be giving them the roadway or the right of way.
Right, right, right.
That has, that the access to that piece of land, we.
I can talk a little bit about this, this is one I actually happen to, to know a bit about, because a few years ago, um, we were looking at the possibility of redeveloping that property.
Pretty comfortable.
So, what we wanted, so the road exists, Carpenter Drive, um, there's a tiny amount that opens out onto that property, it's not real, it's not a lot of frontage, but it's access, and so frontage probably about to be built anyway, but if you go all the way up to the end of it, and you take the immediate right to walk onto the property, what's behind, uh, the neighbors, the neighbors want the land immediately behind them to put in a pool. Now, the, the, the issue with that particular piece that they wanted was that when we hired, um, Dave John Grand Day to do, uh, a, a, a plan for that property, to show where things could go, we were to ever redevelop it, he identified that as the most desirable area for septic. Now, that's not to say that the septic system couldn't go somewhere else, maybe it could, but he identified those soils, because they did soil testing throughout the property, he identified that as being the, the part that would be most suitable for that, so, we were waiting to see, is that property ever going to be developed? I know the people who want that piece have been very interested for years, they've been asking, but we haven't known whether the town wanted to do anything to that property, in the meantime, there was enormous neighborhood opposition to developing that property, so, it was really a standstill, and that's why nothing ever.
I don't think, I don't check it, personally, I think we should not do anything with that piece of property until it, um, we really wouldn't care, clear our idea of what would be acceptable there.
Yeah, especially that one.
That's a nice, good piece of property, and something where you could possibly put something, you know, for the, for the town.
If, if the, the homeowner maybe wanted to, um, you know, have another study done, you know, or test bits or whatever, in that, or select the top level, to just identify other suitable spots, I mean, that could be one thing that would bolster their argument, is other spots that really perp well or do well, um, I think that, that might help, but if you're more sayable than Warren, um, I'm a little bit both ways, like, I'm like, I, I get it, it's ten thousand, that's what you mean, you know? But, I.
Well, I mean, I think, it might, it might be a, it might be a value how you use for the town.
Yeah.
You know, and, and maybe a condominium complex isn't, isn't what it is, um, or, you know, but maybe, maybe something else is, I mean, I don't think the people wanting, the people living around it did not want a big development of any kind there, but, but what if we just had a smaller, uh, thing for like, uh, handicapped people or something like that, you know, I mean, um, it would be a small development takeout, and, and, you know, plenty of landscape, and, and not really, um, not really imposing any difficulties on the neighbors, they might go for that, and it'd be something that would benefit the town, so I think we should, I'd possibly let the um, should, we should hold on to until we have a, 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 a real, a viable use for it, you know?
I agree.
But, Warren, what was the address you said, you said?
Carpenter.
Carpenter three, was it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Alright, so currently, we have written parcel identified for development for affordable housing, design, study, slash soil testing done, public meetings held, project not moved forward due to substantial naked competition. Do you want me to add to that comment a little bit, CPC recommends not, um, selling?
We would like to hold on to this for future town use, I mean, I, you know, and they will, you know, that we can, we can define that any way we want, when the time comes, that we find a, a use that would be, uh, more acceptable, because I think the, I think the big opposition was for some massive, but they didn't want a massive development, yeah, but I don't think they would, uh, I don't think you'd have as much opposition if it was a smaller situation, well, offering, you know, and something useful to the town, so.
But that'd be, out of that whole list, and it's not a long list, but that would be the only one I would agree with, I guess, and then the rest of them are all very small.
Very small.
Very, like, why not just?
I think the last time we looked at it, we ended up saying, we're not really finding much at all.
On average, they're like one, two acres or less, you know, five thousand, nine hundred, or nine thousand, maybe ten thousand, very small.
Yeah.
Relatively, um, yeah, so why not?
I think that's where we ended up the last time.
Buy them, if they're abiding them, which I think in most cases they are, yeah.
Were there any, so in the very last comment, the very last column, that's where I put comments from previous years, um, or other, other times that we have dealt with these, for most of them, it says no future use identified, so I leave all of those. Um, there were a couple that say possible future use, um, possible future use for a sidewalk, this is just a strip in front of three twenty-two Main Street.
Hmm.
Um, it looks like it could have a sidewalk built on it, but it seems that the person who owns three twenty-two Main Street actually wants to make sure that they have legitimate frontage, so, I don't know any more than that about, about their plans for it, um, and then the others that have, excuse me, previously been noted, um,
That's the, um, Boston Flower Market thing there, is that, three twenty-two?
Boston Flower Market? Because that's not town owned.
So, no, what's the, what's the, uh, the, the town owns a piece, that piece of land, but it's a strip, right?
It's a strip, yeah, so.
Is it the old, is it the old, um, the old, uh, pink, uh, section?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, because there used to be trolley cars that ran back before there, and at some point, uh, one, a lawyer bought a, all, bought a whole trolley car thing, so he owned all the frontage on the way down Main, Main Street, so in order to do anything on your property, you had to get your frontage back, you had to buy it from him, you had to buy your section of the, of the, of the railway there, so, I know, because I owned three twenty-four Main Street, and I had to buy it, and I had to go land board, and I'd get access to the property. There was no other, there's a trolley car tracks, and we were there, and then you owned that strip of land all the way down.
So, that one, did you want me to put a comment on that, um, I'm not sure where, that the town is gonna initiate construction of sidewalk, on that segment of Main Street, but.
Well, it would be a problem, because it's, it's been abandoned for the most part, so they would easily get the, they'd easily get control of the, of the property, if it's, if that's what I, if it's what I think it is, so.
So, I could eliminate that comment, uh, of possible future use for sidewalk.
Yeah.
If you want me to, do you want me to eliminate that comment and just say, no future use identified, if we're not concerned?
No, I don't think.
So, you were saying it's okay, you know, because I'm here.
And I would, I would probably, um, I'd probably need to, it's a possible sidewalk, I mean, you know, I mean, if there's any reason, nobody's gonna buy it, I mean, you know.
Someone's requesting it.
Yeah, but, but they're like, they're like.
Well, you know, I mean, are they gonna?
So, the reason they gave, um.
It's not in the layout, right?
No, it, well, I'm sorry, it's not on the private property, it's not in the street layout, it's, it's.
Behind the street.
Yeah, because of.
Behind the street layout, before the property.
Right.
Yeah, so, it's the old track, trolley, in fact.
Okay, so it says, um, the owner has said, no immediate plans for the property, other than to make the existing lot have proper frontage and access to the property.
Yeah, that's.
So.
Land court.
Okay, do you want me to say possible future sidewalk, or do you want me to eliminate that, or something else?
Well, well, I don't, or maybe not, because we already, we, we have enough room in the layout for a sidewalk, so I don't think we need that for a sidewalk, but that may have been the impression somebody got at some point.
I mean, I think that's a portion of Main Street that does not have a sidewalk.
It doesn't have a sidewalk.
Right, because it's up north, headed towards Danover.
Yeah, but it has enough, there's enough room in the layout for sidewalk, that's my point.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, so, or, so, I mean, because, well, we, when you go further south, you've got a sidewalk, on that side, on, um, on the, yeah, on the west side.
So.
East side, I'm sorry.
Then I should say no future use identified?
Yeah, I don't think we have a future use for it.
Okay, great, and then, um.
I mean, because we can, we still have enough room in the layout to put a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Which is what they did further, did further south, so, I mean, I don't see any reason to sit on that, if somebody will take it and clear it up and clean it up, you know, so, you know.
And then the next one I had was nine Patley, it's in the affordable, has an overlay, I don't know what you feel about it, um, the other properties, uh, are moving pretty slowly as far as the development goes, but that's up to you.
Nine Patley, you said, Valley Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You want me to leave that comment, or change it?
How big a piece, how big a, please?
Sorry?
How big a, parcel is?
Oh, let me see.
Two, three, five, yeah, ten thousand square feet.
Was the guy out in front, Dave, wanted to buy it, is that it?
There are two requests, like, I think both neighbors.
On the east side of it.
How, how, what size is it?
On the east side of it, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't think there's any reason to do that, it's small, right?
Did you say ten thousand square feet, that was all in?
Yeah, three, five, the zoning in that area is twenty thousand for lots, so that.
They can't do anything with it.
Well, meaning it's small, if you, if, if we had sewer, but if we, you know, maybe if you need septic, you need septic, and you need a house, so it's not a lot of area.
Yeah, yeah, well.
That's why the, that's why the zone, probably twenty thousand, it's like.
That's also been high watered, so, you know, very over there, so.
Yeah, so they need, you know, broader system, or.
Yeah, I think that's upland, that's back, that's upland, so you have a place to.
Yeah.
Put a system in.
I do remember when we went around with Habitat for Humanity, and they were looking at parcels in the overlay, um, this was not one that they identified, even though there's very easy to, so, I'm wondering if it's not as developable as was one stop, and it's.
Yeah, I don't think it's.
Yeah, let's.
Yeah, get rid of that, so, Quinby, my question is Quinby.
Yeah.
Is that one that has it on there?
Well, so, yeah, so if you look at the street, you go down.
Yeah.
If you, it just, it ends.
Yeah.
So, they're just looking to like probably a street extension, I would think.
Yeah.
And then, there.
Cause there's two, right?
Yes, no, there's, there's four, oh, four, but what's interesting is one of them, so you got sixteen, eighteen, and twenty, of both ten thousand square foot lots, so, if someone were to purchase all three, right, do a little road extension, and you're good, right?
Yeah.
And, so, so you're gonna be, be okay, and the other side of the road, number nineteen, is only five thousand square feet, so that, you know someone's just adding to the back end of their property.
I think it's all part of one purchase, it looks like the same person wants to do that.
Somebody's trying to buy.
Can, can I interject, because this is why we're here?
Oh, okay.
So, Sandy Frangello, she owns, um, a lot on Harris, which is a paper road, it's point six-three acres, and the backside are three very small parcels on Quinby, that if you combine, that would be a buildable lot with the proper setbacks, and also give access to electrical and water. And in return, she owns ten acres on Swan Pond, next to Dana Rose's former ten wa- uh, ten acre, that she wanted to do a land swap.
Oh, cool. So, have you, you made that proposal?
We wrote a letter last year.
Have you?
Last year, yeah.
I don't know, but you're getting all that.
I, no, I mean, the, the TA's office does the, uh, town land stuff, but I, I think I have, um, I I didn't explain them before, but certainly people who have seen those properties on the market have called to fire.
Yeah, sure, people have.
But, yeah, I haven't been involved in any, like, aspect.
And I wasn't involved in trying to sell those, that was somebody else.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, what's the feedback that you got from Mike or from the town? Did you?
Nothing, probably.
I haven't spoken to any, I.
The town administrator, because that's, I think, who you.
Oh, we, we were just directed to write a letter and to yourself, to the board.
Okay.
Um, proposing the land swap, because that ten acres is also abutting the large parcel that I believe is owned by the town of Danvers.
Yeah.
For, because that's their drinking water supply, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So, it, 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 uh, it's adjacent to their land as well, so I don't know if there's some resale value involved, they, the town could sell it to the town of Danvers and get some money for it, she's been paying taxes on it for twenty-five years, and it's landlocked, and so what she was asking, or we're asking, is to do a land swap, the town takes the ten acres, that I would imagine is worth more than those three tiny little parcels on Quinby.
Right.
So, I imagine that is what's gonna be in front of the select board, because this is on, the battle is noted on the spreadsheet, that there's a desire to do a land swap and what the properties are, so that's here on the information, so I'm sure that that's what they'll be.
So, are they looking, like, again, I think I've already said, I'm good with those, although, were those, did, did those have a different comment? Is that what you're implying, Jeff?
No, no, um, they all say see above.
Yeah, yeah, they just are, it's all, it's all one, but, you know, again, Carpenter, and I mean, really, just, I mean, that's the only one, I kind of agree with Warren a little bit, like, Mike, while I, I think the ten thousand's not a lot, and I do think it's important, big piece of land, um, these other ones, I don't, I don't think, I think we should give the residents, they're all the butters usually, right, that are trying to buy these, we should let them do that, kind of clean them off the books, you know?
Yeah, there's like all these little, tiny little lots, I don't know.
Yeah.
Came up with those lot lines back when.
Send the babies free.
Yeah.
Find their mom.
No, a lot of these, a lot of these are set up with woodlots, so the people that live in town, they buy a woodlot, and they go there and cut wood for.
No, you're right, yeah, yeah.
Wow, that really is. But, you're aging yourself.
For yourself, even, just so you have.
It's been so long, time, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Be your, like, source of water, so you aren't looking to build on it or anything, it was just.
So, uh, I mean, the plan is, so her son lives in Tingasboro, he has three kids, oh, several, sorry, um, she lives in Martin's Landing, and they wanted to build a house with an A U in-law setup, so that her and she can take care of the kids and bring, bring out their kids, and they grew up, lived here in seventy-eight, yeah, so.
He's not born here, right, it was.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, her son wants to bring his kids up here in North Reading, and this is a way to do it.
Yeah, my vote.
So, no reason to keep for each of those properties.
So, Dave, you have one question, and, this probably isn't a great question, um, so, and I just want, so I have attached properties.
Yeah.
We have three more to go.
So, Habitat had expressed interest in three, um, we got the authority to sell, uh, do not sell, to, to convey one of them, and we got money to evaluate an additional two, so right now, the one that, uh, Habitat is, well, they've had the purchase and sale agreement for quite some time, I need to follow up, but the one that they're intending to, um, to get from the town is just Seven Saint Teresa, um, Oakdale, and, um, they were interested in, and there was one.
So.
So, those have not moved forward.
Okay, so, that, just, my point was that, as far as that kind of what we do, we're all good and set, we don't need to attach or keep any other properties for that purpose, correct?
So, for Habitat in particular, they had expressed interest possibly in, in, in three properties, right now, just. Right now, just the one is about to be under agreement, but as far as anything else in the affordable housing overlay district, we don't have any applications on any of them. They're all town-owned, they're all available to be sold if the town sees fit, um. The other one, then we mentioned one that was in that district, the other one is Twenty One Bliss, um. That's also in the affordable housing overlay district, if somebody does want to purchase it, I don't know, I mean, previously, we've always made the note, um, possible future use for affordable housing. I don't know if you want to continue making that note, or if you just want to put no future use identified, but of those properties, just those two.
Okay, so, and, and my, and just my point was, to you, you, Warren, because we worked really hard, I remember working that one and trying to get it to a board. As long as, like, there are no other properties on this list to be considered for that?
Not right now, Habitat did not express interest in either of those.
Okay, then I know.
I mean, you could sell them to others if you wanted to, but it seems like we're a really long way away from.
Yeah, no, 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 it's cool, I just, I know we're doing it practically with that stuff anyway, so, that's, yeah, and I knew that, but, thank you.
Sure. So Twenty One Bliss, do you want me to make a same note that there's no future use identified?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that is everything as far as the comments, I will revise these comments and give them back to Lydia for. Uh, applying to the select board.
Just one quick one on the Twenty One Bliss note, it just that they may want this parcel in addition to Twenty One Bliss, on the Twenty One Bliss. I assume it means the nineteen bliss.
Oh, yeah. Yes, I, yes, those are the two each other.
Who's checking?
Yeah.
And Danielle Zero Railroad Ave.
Oh, that is, do you remember?
Cause we.
The Railroad Ave project, yeah, he was hoping to get a piece of town-owned land to expand the total land area for that project. So that one, I don't think.
Oh, so, so this is the actual developer that, um.
Yeah, this is, um, I don't think his name was listed on here, but yeah, that's, I think that request came in from the, from the. Developer of the Railroad Ave properties, um, who came in for. Last year. Cause he did say, when he came in, he's like, I'm gonna see if I can try to get another piece, um, to, to add to this, um.
No, is it, okay, so.
Yeah, so that's, that would be.
And that's only seven thousand square feet.
Right.
So it's not very big, but.
Oh, yeah, add to the owner's current property, one in Three Railroad Ave, and which he's pursuing for, for two households. Well, if there's nothing else on that, then thank you, I will adjust those comments, I will send them back in, uh, tomorrow.
Thanks, Danielle.
You're welcome, and the select board can move along with their town lands, down to these.
Last up.
Seven Downing Lane.
Um, Luke dropped off, uh, planning for discussion, I don't.
Yeah, I have it on the back, or you gave me?
Oh, great, okay.
Do you guys have, you can put it up on your, you can put it up too, Danielle.
Oh, yeah, okay, um.
I'm presenting every moving stuff to the board. My name is Refuse.
Please state your name and your address, sir.
Every time you comment.
There you go, David Brumoff, Twenty Nine Dwayne Drive, um, this is the, um. The proposed A and R, and it's, not quite unusual, but we, we, um, the. This parcel, and I'll go through a little bit of history on it, but this parcel is, uh, registered land, and so it has to go through the deregistration process. Um, you know, fortunately and unfortunately, we're, we're all aware of the Affordable Homes Act that was passed in last summer, or signed into law. Uh, somewhere by Amory Neely, and one of the, one of the elements of the act was to reduce the amount of time it takes for people to de-list property from Land Court. Unfortunately, as we're told, attorneys and stuff, that created somewhat of a bull rush on that, that, uh, process. And so the, the department over, you know, Land Court, you know, is like overrun with, um, applications, so. It's taking a lot longer, we did not expect to be at this point, um, where we're still not delisted. So, um, in talking with Danielle and with, um, Lou, the, the way we're proceeding is, because you can't endorse this until this is. We're ca, we're able to, um, put this into registry of deeds and all that stuff, so you can endorse it. So there's no point in, like, having you vote on it tonight, but we, we just wanted to kind of at least move the process forward while we're waiting for that release. Cause all the engineering's done, all the decisions are made, so we'd want to show you what the, uh, proposed A and R, so give you, just this quick history. Um, the, this, this land itself was, you know, eighty acres, that was conveyed by John Flint back in eighteen twenty-three. Um, to Jacob Gowing, and so kind of eighteen twenty-three is where the Gowing, uh, name came into, um, play here with this. Eighty, eighty acres, uh, of, of land, and then it went up basically a full hundred, and what was it, twenty-three years? In the Gowing family, and not until nineteen sixty-one was it conveyed to my wife's, um, dad, Robert Downing. So since nineteen sixty-one, almost half that time, so sixty-four years, um, the Downeys have owned. You know, or have been part of this eighty acres, um, all around this property, we live on one side of it, um. My wife's mom lives on another side, her dad's land is still on the, on the lane, so it's, it's been around for a long time. Unfortunately, um, Noel's aunt, um, had passed away, she was ninety-two years old, but passed away at the end of twenty-four. And came with that, um, came her five acres, and so we're basically, uh, she. Just normal, uh, financial situation, she had a re-voice mortgage and things like that, so we're unfortunately kind of forced to kind of dot, divide up the land. And sell a couple parcels, it, it can support, um, definitely three parcels, and that's what we show here. But, um, we're looking to just, um, really market two, and the rest we're just gonna hang on to, or, um, you know, for, um. Just to keep them developed, so, just show you the lane, you come off Hayrow right here. This is the land, the old land, it's an odd shape and everything like that, um, but right now it is paved. With new pavement all the way here, and then there is old pavement here that is gonna be replaced. So that it can serve this parcel, the only property, um, on the parcel right now is a, an old house in a barn. And that will be put into parcel, or lot one, I shouldn't say parcel, lot one, so that's, we're looking to lot, so it's got the hundred and sixty linear feet. It's got sixty-one thousand square feet, about twenty-one over what's needed, and we have the access here, um, of this private drive, and then lot two. Is, uh, fifty-one thousand, and, uh, that has a hundred and sixty linear feet of frontage. Um, and then.
Going Lane never accepted as a street?
No, and they, and no one ever, you know, asked for it to be, it's always stayed private. Um, or at least Bob, you know, wanted it always to be private, so they never really tried to do that. It, it does tighten up down here, right up Hayrow, so I think it'd be questionable. Um, but if, if you're looking at, like, the subdivision law passed in fifty-three, this is, you know, the road was created in eighteen, what was it? Fifty-eight, so ninety-one years before the. Yeah, so it's, it's, it also has a connection down here to, um, Elm Street. But we, um, what we decided to do is, is so we, um, don't overdevelop this land, we're taking this as a parcel. So that's just an undeveloped parcel right now, so nothing can be built right on there, and there's a small chunk here near, on our, um. On my wife's. We're gonna hold, so I mean, that's.
Why is that small chunk here?
Basically, Warren, it goes, the frontage goes one sixty, one sixty, one sixty, and we just held it at one sixty there, so. It's all wetlands and stuff, but it just, it gets a very strange, the, the coast domain here at the end of, uh, the street, so it was just. Don't keep that as a parcel, so it, it kind of stays in the family, if you will, because lot, lot one is one of the ones we. I don't know, there's a lot of wetlands around there, though, so. That upper area, but it's also, this is, this is a good, um, you know, a way, all the deer kind of go down to the river. Through this area, it's a, it's a really cool, um, nature alley, so we want to really try to preserve that. Um, and, you know, they come right into our property too, so, that's like a daily event scene. Fishers, deer, now coyotes, everything like that, just kind of passing through like the highway. Um, so that's it, I, um, if you guys have any questions, I've been answered. But we won't see you until it's clear, and then we come back for the normal.
Oh, my only question would be like, the roadway. It's like, sure, you know, I, I know that, I, I know, I know the road, I've been down that road a couple times.
Yeah.
But I, not really, um, passable to vehicles very recently.
No, it's not passable for two vehicles, it's, it's very hard packed the whole way, and what we're doing, part of this process, and have, uh, started. Few months ago, is clearing all the trees, it's kind of beautiful street, it's all, it's lined by, you know, stone walls on both sides. And so right here, it just opens right up, it's kind of nice, it's just all leaves, and then you have just the, the hot top road. Um, and so that, we're looking to leave that way, so we're cutting down anything that's within those trees, to keep it really wide open. Um, so, I think, I think if you go down there more too, since it's time to do that, you should check it out, but it's. I think you'd be pleased, it's pretty, it's much more opened up, I think, um, it was getting overgrown a little bit. But part of this process is the realization that we need to, you know, open it all up and get it, so that's very passable. There, the change to this, really the net, is so, not developing that, but even if we did, it's, that's an easy now. This is the driveway, the present driveway right now that crosses through, so the new driveway would use that exact same curve opening in the stone wall. Warren and Algo down here to where Luke thinks a house would go, you know, right here, and so the only new cut is you just one right in here, just to go alongside, cause they. The barns, I don't think anyone would ever touch the barn, they might.
Right.
Want to replace the house, but the barn's really beautiful barn, so they would just come in. But.
Didn't it get burned down, or you got rebuilding?
No, that's, that was the, uh, um, Noel's mom's house, but that was the old farmhouse.
Yeah.
That burned out, yeah, not the barn, but, um, yeah, so really the only head change, like, call it curve cut, is just right here. Only a hundred feet down, and it's just through the stone wall and then back down. So it's, it's not a lot, not a lot of changes to the road, only one, you know, one opening. Questions?
I'm just trying maybe, um, just take a look at that part of Going Lane, only because, by the time I actually come, it's for the A and R to come in and be assigned and everything. We just want to be sure, so, this, um, street predates not only subdivision control, but also our, our adequate access bylaw. So the unaccepted ways permit that we usually ask people to get, i- in my opinion, within the five year, because it's, it came a hundred years after this road was here. But I think, um, you just want to make sure that you're comfortable with there physically being access to those lots, that you could get there in a vehicle. And if there was any improvement that you wanted to see, I think now would be the time.
Exactly, so that's why if you want to go down there, in the next, you have plenty of time, I don't think, you know, it's not gonna be on the agenda for. You know, at least two, three, or four meetings, maybe.
If you. We've got to maintain it as a private lane.
It will, it will have a, we, our attorney that's drafting the P and S's here is also drafting, which they didn't need before, because it was all family. Here, you pay fifty percent of the following, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Now they need a, an agreement for the street.
Well, I was wondering about, what I was wondering about is the ability for two vehicles, who's, someone's properties, and if you've got. Somebody who buys in there with, fills a nice bed, five bedroom house, and they got six cut vehicles, and they're driving back and forth, and they're keeping under end of each other. The road's not wide enough.
Well, I think what you'll see, though, if you do check it out, is that the, the road is, again, it's very hard-packed, established. People just would go off to the side a little bit and back on, it's not, it's not like a mud road, it's, it's.
That's fine, maybe in the summertime, but in the winter.
Right.
Absolutely plausible, and through the snowbank comes there.
Yeah.
And, and you're captured.
Mine is a public road, we sometimes pull over into the woods, let people by.
No, and I know, I know plenty of people in North Reading that have similar kind of, be, the dirt. This at least is a, a painted road, I get, I get people on dirt roads in North Reading.
Well, I'm just saying that, you know, because what happens is, uh, then they come in there and get asked the question, and I, I know, there's a couple of them. The common driveway one, where we got a lot of flack, because we allowed the common driveway, even though we don't allow common driveways, we allowed to talk into it. And then the people bought the house, and then they didn't get along, and.
Like the one we did on Hayrow, you know, the, the limited frontage law.
The big fight went down off of Box Street, and it was a big, big battle, and everything, you know, come to blows.
That's why they have lawyers, Warren, so that's why, I mean, it has to be a good agreement, it's like an HOA kind of thing, almost.
We would be asked why we didn't require that it be a wide enough roadway. And, and I don't know, what is the width, did you measure that roadway?
Yeah, it's, uh, fifteen feet of asphalt, and then widens out over here, but.
Well, by department, wants eighteen. We want minimum of eighteen feet, and that's where their apparatus, and so, that's gonna be something to run into, so, but if you kind of plan on doing the eighteen right up front. You also then have a road that's repassed, pass and repassed. So you might want to consider that in the process.
Yeah, I mean, we'll look into it.
Yeah, but it's a flight department.
We have limited funds, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to recreate, like, what is already kind of there, you know, in the, in the.
I understand.
Yeah. That it?
Thanks for sharing.
Thanks, guys, yeah, thank you, first time being on the other side of the table, I mean.
At the top, I watch it.
Yeah. Probably be tough doing a subdivision.
Done plenty of times, just in other towns.
Yeah. True, that is true.
Projects that we worked on, so.
I remember when we were getting the very property, you know, from the state to sell it, we needed Wilmington to sign off on an A and R with us. And he had not realized that until, like, the last minute, so, Phil Bellavance was the chair of the Times, so he and I went to the Wilmington planning board to ask them to sign this A and R. And I remember him just saying, oh, it's hot back here.
I love Bill. Bill was there when I, when I first got on.
Yeah.
He was great, he was like me, he was the one that.
Yeah, he was like.
Animated one, I just sat there, just trying to absorb everything, now I've become Bill. Next, it's up.
Well, we haven't been planning administrative updates, so.
Just a few, they're most related to scheduling, um.
We don't, no ZBAs, right?
No, so on the subject of the ZBA, I will just say that the Twenty Old Street, uh, Forty B project has been continued to October. Twenty-third, but because they haven't identified a room for it yet, that date might change, so I will let you know, um, what I hear, um, I have.
Interesting, we're gonna form this now.
Well, the two rooms in the high school that they were hoping to get were not available on the twenty-third, but the ZBA continued it before they knew the availability of the room. So they may have to adjust their schedule a little bit, um, I have offered to coordinate, um, peer review for traffic and stormwater. So GM two is gonna be doing that, um, the ZBA is contacting with them, it's kind of going through. It's not really going through the planning department, because it's not our project, so the funds will be, you know, with builders, but I'm helping with that, because I'm used to it, so. Um, as far as any comments from the CPC members, you're welcome to give them to me, I can pass them on if you want to see the peer review first. I mean, I haven't given any comments of my own, because I thought it would be more appropriate to get a peer review, um, but if you have.
See what GM two has to say.
Yeah, just see it, there and rather than, what they got.
I haven't had a chance to review that plan yet myself, but it's been kind of busy lately. But, um, that's coming, that's slowing down.
Um, then, September twenty-ninth will be the select board's informational hearing on warrant articles. I will be there, discuss the law claim, uh, article changes. Um, town meeting is October sixth, I will post a pre-meeting for the CPC for six thirty in the middle school conference room, as we normally do. Um, October twentieth is not confirmed, but it, it might be a day for select board, um, and CPC joint appointments. Um, both for CPC interim member and EDC candidates, I will keep you posted as soon as I know more on that.
So you said on October twentieth, Danielle?
Yeah, though it's not confirmed, it's just looking at.
And that was for CPC and EDC?
Um, hopefully, yes. But I will let you know as soon as I know that.
I'm sorry.
So Danielle, is our meeting scheduled then the seventh and twenty-first?
Um, yes, so I did want to ask you if you want to meet the seventh, it's the day after town meeting, and right now we have no public hearings or other business on for that agenda. Um, so I just wanted to ask you if you wanted to plan to meet, or nothing got continued to that night, so. And right now we have no public hearings or other business on for that agenda, um, so I just wanted to ask you if you wanted to plan to meet or nothing got continued to that night, so.
That's why just wait to see if we get anything.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, if we don't, it's okay, you know, or if it's just minus that, we can move it on. But, um, other than that, I just leave it open now.
Okay. Um, the Attorney General's Office gave us our, uh, the, the decision on accessory dwelling in a bylaw from January, it's in the one draft. The letter is somewhat long, um, this isn't the situation where they've told the town to go back to town meeting to fix things, they've just stricken certain language. Um, so what I don't have yet is the actual final bylaw, the way it was, with the way.
The way they adjusted it?
What was that?
The way they have adjusted it?
Yes, so I'm waiting for that from the town clerk, as soon as I have that, I'll share it with you. It's a little easier than going through all of the language of this was stricken and that was stricken, um.
But you gave us a heads up on a couple of things, we thought they would nip and they have.
And.
So they nipped everything that we tried to.
Um, yeah, but think about no, uh, manufactured homes, um, all of that.
And then, and think about foundations, they said, well, you know, it's got to have a foundation, but it doesn't need to be a permanent foundation, it doesn't need to be.
Oh, man.
That's gone.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of that.
So it's just a wild.
So a camper's in the way.
Going to the private, you can move it around, yeah.
You want to read it in the front, because a lot of the stuff they do, they go through this whole thing and they says, the way they're leading this. We're deleting this, I'm deleting this. You know, I'm like, geez, you know, I don't know, they're gonna pay, two hundred, uh, two hundred.
So they struck false autonomy.
They struck all of our language?
No, no.
Two hundred dash six, all this stuff and they didn't like any of it.
They struck the part about the manufactured homes, they struck, um, the, the, the subject of a lot of conversation, but, um, trying to. Make, uh, the accessory structure dimensional requirements different for ABUs, they, they struck that language too.
Yeah, but the other thing.
You have a word of the height?
We don't, we, we outlawed manufactured homes, but we don't have any, we don't have any definition of a manufactured home in our bylaw, so we can't, we can't delete some, we can't.
So we have to create something.
We have to, we have to have, we have to define that, if we're gonna remove it, we have to define it.
I think so, they just took it out.
Yeah, I know, they just took it out, but they pointed out that we, that we put it in there and then we didn't define it, so we didn't say what that was, so we're gonna call this, this.
So we don't actually have to do anything.
So, yeah, did we get anything with that?
Yeah, yeah, it was only that one section.
So I think the purpose was to just say, because it, it would be confusing for people to not have it in our zoning bylaw, but then come to the building counter and ask for a permit. We were trying to get a few more dimensional controls and then, you know, we were not really committed to keep those.
So a height requirement, we have to conform to our state's height requirement?
It's just the state, yeah, I mean, the language still stands, we still, we now we have a definition in our bylaw, now we have, you know, a pro, a procedure in there, but none of the stuff that.
Did this, so someone did.
You got a chance, you got a chance, read it.
No.
Warren, the problem. It's actually funny. She was just doing here to regular, whatever, houses are.
Half of you were laughing because of the way they went about it, well, you did this, but we don't like to, so we don't leave it, I'm like, well, okay.
In, in the letter, they described that it has to be the more permissive of, of whether single family or accessory structure. So I, it, it's like, yeah, you can still have an ABU and have a.
Ten feet? Oh, that's.
You could, you could add, you could add a building on that's without a, it has to have a foundation.
So they completed, like for convenience, they completed accessory structure with ABU. I mean, that's just, that is so weasely, hey.
That seems to be it, yeah.
For sheds, you know?
So I have a question, because I know like we always have fun with this one. So if someone has. An existing house and say they put an addition on the house and the addition is, you know, like what you would call an in-law, but it's not, it's actually technically an addition, right?
None of this, you can do what you want.
That's my house.
No, 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 so my question Danielle was. Um, so if you had that type of house, because I know like a lot of houses in North Reading, you have the house, then they have like a wing off the house where it's an addition, you know, which has. Separate bathroom, separate kitchen, separate stove and all that stuff. And then under the ABU law, can you leave that structure as is? And even though we know that it's like an ABU or it's.
And it's still added on.
For another?
I think we can, because if it's not already an ABU on your property.
Yeah, it's not called an ABU, yes, you gotta have an ABU on an ABU, that's what you're asking.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
If the first one did not call it an ABU, you'd only have one ABU, but if the first.
So it's just a technical.
If the first one was like just an, an, an expansion of the kitchen or something, you know, so that, so that you didn't actually have a permit for an ABU, then you could do an ABU on top of that.
So if you never pulled a permit, you had that whole extension on the side of your house and then you had to apply for.
Upstairs and then they put an in-law in the basement and then you could add an ADU on for the grandkids.
So, yeah, my, my house, for instance, this is about nine hundred square feet of the original house, which has a kitchen, a dining room, a living room, a bedroom and a bathroom. And then they went up, added three bedrooms and a full bath, then they went out and added a living room, another living room, a full kitchen. Uh, it was a loft that we've now turned into another bedroom and it's just, it's just a, uh.
It's an addition.
It's an addition, that's the word, it's just an addition.
It's a frat house.
The fact that I have, the, the fact that both sides of the house have separate entrances. They're connected.
So technically you could add an ABU to that, because technically.
I could add an ABU to my property, wow, yeah.
You still captured the nine hundred square feet, but.
Cause I was so confused, because when I, at my last house, I went to the town hall and was like. What is, you know, I understand that in-law apartments, it was what we called them then, aren't legal in town, what do, what do you classify as in-law apartment? A second kitchen, this, that, like, I don't really have any definitions, but you just can't have it. But if I added a kitchen and a bed, like, oh, that's fine, and then this other house came on the market, it was like, this is exactly what I was explaining. And it already exists, so.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Checked all the boxes and now if I wanted to, the way my property is designed, if I wanted a clear cut into the woods a little bit. I would have plenty of room and have more than a ten feet to put another.
What the question with.
Something on there.
Is your septic big enough?
I've already got four, I'm good, and a mother-in-law in the ADU now, I'm like, eh, I'm not adding anything.
But that, even the septic ones, it, it's been, you can go some shady on it too, because you could just say, I am retiring my bedroom upstairs.
It's a library.
Where, yeah, exactly, it's a bigger painting room now.
Yeah, mostly it's green here.
It's a soaring room, yeah, so that, that gives us some, you know, as the.
All right, we all, we all said.
Algae plume is coming from the backyard now, there's twelve bedrooms.
So I'm gonna close the meeting, which we can turn the photo off, so we didn't, so nobody else is, is doing it.
Yes, exactly. The stylings are there.